Welcome. Welcome, everyone. It's nice to see so many smiling faces tonight for what is certainly going to start out to be a celebratory evening. I appreciate all of you being here. This is the Tuesday, June 7, 2022, meeting of the Carrboro Town Council. And we have, we are going to be starting off tonight with, by welcoming a new member of the town council. Yeah. So, we're going to do that first thing. That's going to be the very first item on our agenda. And then we'll have a few minutes for comments from our new council member and congratulatory remarks from current council members. And then we're going to take a brief recess so that we can have a new group photo to reflect our new town council. And after the recess, we'll come back and get on with our business. All right? So first, I do want to start by acknowledging that we have some special guests here tonight. We always have special guests, but some extra special guests. And first, I'll just recognize them briefly. First is our former mayor, Lydia Lavelle. Welcome, Lydia. Also have our Orange County Clerk of Superior Court and your probate judge, Mark Kleinschmidt. Former Orange County Commissioner Penny Rich. Very happy to welcome Chapel Hill Councilmember Paris Miller-Fouchier. And I believe I just saw District Court Judge Joel Brown walk in. Former member of this council. So, probably our most special guest tonight, actually, I really feel privileged to welcome him here and who will be administering the oath of office to Eliassar this evening, is Representative Ricky Hurtado. Ricky, as you all know, is an ally and a friend who represents Alamance County in the North Carolina House of Representatives. And it's a real honor to have you here tonight, Representative Hurtado. So, we're going to start with you and with Eliassar. If you'll come on up and take the oath.
Yo, Eliassar, juro apoyar y mantener la Constitución.
Yo, Eliassar, juro apoyar y mantener la Constitución.
Y las leyes de los Estados Unidos.
Y las leyes de los Estados Unidos.
Y la Constitución y las leyes de Carolina del Norte.
Y la Constitución y las leyes de Carolina del Norte.
Que no sean incompatibles con estas.
Que no sean incompatibles con estas.
Y desempeñar con lealtad los deberes del cargo.
Y desempeñar con lealtad los deberes del cargo.
Como concejal de la ciudad de Carrboro.
Como concejal de la ciudad de Carrboro.
Que estoy a punto de aceptar de acuerdo con mi leal saber y capacidad.
Estoy a punto de aceptar con mi leal saber y capacidad.
Y que Dios me ayude.
Y que Dios me ayude. I, Eliassar Posada.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Say it again.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution.
I do solemnly swear that I support and maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a council member.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a council member.
Of the town of Carrboro.
Of the town of Carrboro.
On which I am about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
According to my best skill and ability.
According to my best skill and ability.
So help me God.
You belong up here now. Take a breath. I know you probably would like a couple minutes to say some words, and I'm happy to hear them.
Primero que nada, muchas gracias a mi familia, a mis amigos, a representante Hurtado. Muchas gracias por estar acá esta tarde. Como han escuchado, parte de mi servicio viene de la enseñanza de mi madre. So, quiero tomar un momento para, antes de empezar esta nueva etapa, esta nueva trayectoria, honrar no solamente a mi madre, sino a todos mis ancestros y las personas que han hecho posible que yo sea acá. Por ellos estoy en esta posición. Good evening. First, I want to thank my family, my friends, supporters, of course, Representative Hurtado for doing me the honor of swearing me in. I just want to take a couple of moments to thank the folks who made it possible for me to be here tonight. As many of you've heard, I fully accredit my mother for my push and willingness to serve. She was the one that taught me that community comes first and that we must serve others in order to serve ourselves. And I want to take, before we get into all of this heavy agenda, take a moment to honor my ancestors, everyone who I'm standing on the shoulders of. And of course, to thank my mother. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here tonight, but she is watching, and I'm sure she's crying. So, yeah. I'm look forward to this new stage. Thank you all for the trust that you've put in me. And I'll work every day to live up to your expectations, but above all, the expectations of my community. I may not always agree with every single person in this room. I may not always take the vote that you exactly want me to take, but know one thing, and this is my promise, that every vote I take sitting on this table will be in honor and representation of my community. Thank you.
To recognize any council members who want to share any comments.
I'll start.
Barbara?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome. Welcome, Councilmember Posada. You're sitting right beside me. Lucky me, right? Lucky me. So, what an exciting time for Carrboro. What an exciting time for Carrboro and this town council to have you officially with us. Representation does matter, and you are a shining example of that, as I have watched you work in this community and beyond. I know that you will bring the same energy to the council seat that you have exuded with El Centro Hispano, the Town of Carrboro Planning Board, Carrboro Connects Task Force, and all of the other causes that you have championed as a community activist. You have contributed so much to the community already by lending your voice to issues that matter to all of us. This makes it official. Again, welcome to the Carrboro Town Council, Mr. Posada, Mr. Councilmember Posada. Congratulations.
I also wanted to share a few words. Eliassar, you're perhaps best known in the community through all of your great work with El Centro Hispano. But I also really appreciate your service on Board of Directors of local nonprofits, including the Chamber of Commerce and Porch, and your service with local government advisory boards, including Carrboro's Planning Board and our Task Force for Carrboro Connects Comprehensive Plan, which is a plan that we will vote, we'll be voting to approve a little bit later this evening. How lucky we are that you are now bringing all of the connections and the experiences and the skills and perspectives and the knowledge that you developed from your community and public service to our council. How lucky for Carrboro that more and more community members will now be able to see themselves in our council, especially the 2,700 community members who identify themselves as Hispanic or Latino. How lucky for Carrboro that so many young people will find real inspiration in your story, Eliassar, the son of migrant farmer workers, an openly gay millennial Latino, who has dedicated so much of his professional and personal life to helping those that have felt marginalized or have felt left out. And finally, Eliassar, how lucky for Carrboro that you will bring the warmest, the tightest bear hugs of anybody I have ever known in my entire life to our local body. Bear hugs that are really a physical manifestation of your ability to pull us all in, to help us feel a little bit more connected to each other, and to remind us that no matter what, we'll all still be friends. So, I'm looking forward to working with you, Eliassar. Thank you.
Eliassar, the day has come. I'm remembering back to when we first met in Durham at El Centro. And you had built the program, the teen program, and you were launching it. And I remember thinking how you brought community together and gave voice to LGBTQ plus teens in the Latinx and Hispanic community. That was so important. And later on, working with El Centro in Carrboro and the CEL, you know, it's very dear to my heart, but you had created a moment where there was a different kind of bridge between the Carrboro community and El Centro and the CEL. And I want to thank you for that. Part of the community activism that you showed in Durham and at El Centro and with the CEL here in Carrboro, you moved that forward and you built that into the community. You became part of Carrboro. You represented in Carrboro. And I want to thank you not only for that, but we had talked maybe eight years ago about the dream of when we will sit on the board together, and it is here and it is now. And I thank you for the perseverance, because I know last year was very, very difficult through illness and the fire and various things that were obstacles that no, no one should have to deal with, and you, you still forged ahead. So, welcome and thank you for joining our board.
Eliassar, I don't want to repeat the many long list of things that you're known in our community for. Folks have very well done that, but I'm very thankful for your stepping up and going beyond that and finding other ways to express that work with our community by serving with us here on this town council. And, you know, I'll be a friend to you whenever you need to have questions. I'm happy to be, as I'm sure all my other colleagues will, helpful in showing you the ropes. Welcome to the council.
Eliassar, it is a real joy to welcome you here to our shared days. And I know as, as you've spoken about your run and what you hope to accomplish here and the work that you've done, I really take to heart and I really appreciate the way that we share our commitment to expanding access to this community. This is a place where many people want to share in our community and build their equity and make a life for their families. And I was planning to say this before I knew that I was going to be the last person who spoke, but I just wanted to say, hell yeah, brother. Welcome.
Thank you all. I'll just say briefly a couple of instances of, I guess, happy coincidence between me and Eliassar. First is that our families, at least on some sides, are, grew up in the same part of South Texas. In fact, in the same little town in South Texas where Eliassar grew up is where my father grew up. And we've got that, I really appreciate that link, and my dad is thrilled for you as well. I will just say that. I'll also just note for everyone that this is Pride Month, and it is a happy coincidence for me that you are filling a vacancy that I left on the council when I moved into me that you are filling a vacancy that I left on the council when I moved into this chair and have, by doing so, made Carboro, put Carboro back into the lead as the town or city in North Carolina with the most ever LGBTQ elected officials. And I'd say that's pretty good for a town of 21,000 in a state with so many people. So, welcome. Let's get to work. Everyone, I'm going to call a brief recess, and we're going to have an opportunity to update our town council official photo during that recess, and then we will come back and get to our regular agenda. So those of you who wish to stay for that, you're welcome to do so, of course, and those of you who wish to make a quick escape, I encourage you to do that. We'll call a recess. blitz. Councilmembers, first thing I wanted to raise is a potential adjustment to the agenda and just to see if y'all are okay with this adjustment, and this would be to move item G2, which is related to the Arts Center, up earlier in the agenda. So I'm thinking after the consent agenda. Is there any problem with any objection to that? All right, so we'll do that, and Mr. Manager will move G2 up to right after the consent agenda. Also, sorry to say that our poet laureate, Fred Joyner, contacted me late this afternoon and said that unfortunately something came up and he wouldn't be able to join us tonight, so we'll hope to see our poet laureate next week. I don't have any proclamations to read. I did issue a few proclamations last week, including, as I mentioned before, Pride Month. Also, it is Immigrant Heritage Month, and we just observed Gun Violence Awareness Day, and there were some appropriate events over the weekend related to that that I hope you all will read more about. So we'll move on now to announcement of upcoming meetings. Mary?
On June 8th at 6:00 PM, there will be an Arts Committee meeting. That will be virtually. Let's see, then the next one is June 9th at 6:30. It's also virtual, the Stormwater Advisory Commission meeting. Then June 13th at 7:00 PM, virtually, will be the Recreation and Parks Commission meeting. And then after that, the next town council meeting will be June 14th at 7:00 PM here in the same location we're at now. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Mary. And tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, also a virtual meeting of, it's the monthly meeting of the Durham Chapel Hill Carboro Metropolitan Planning Organization Board. Just so councilmembers know, we are welcoming a new executive director of the MPO, who I think brings a lot of enthusiasm, especially for, as you know, the recent changes we made to our long-term transportation plan in the region and trying to make some real advances in transportation planning in the Western Triangle that responds to our interests around climate action. So he is coming onboard this month. Any other town meetings that we need to know about? Susan?
Thank you, Mayor. John, you may need to help me out with this, but the Economic Sustainability Commission meeting was canceled for June 8th due to a lack of a quorum and rescheduled for June 15th at 6 o'clock. That will be in-person. And then I also wanted to mention that the ESC will be going on a field trip on June 10th to meet with staff in Raleigh and Cary about economic development projects, and that will include a tour of the Box Yard RTP. Thank you for organizing all that, John.
Thank you, Susan. Sammy?
Monday, June 13th, the Family Success Alliance will be meeting virtually at 1:00 PM.
All right, thank you all. We'll next move on to public comment on items that are not on our printed agenda, and I think I have three folks signed up in that category, and we're going to just go in the order that folks signed up, and that first person is Addie Wilson. Ms. Addie, are you here? Are you ready to speak? If you'll join, come on up to the podium up here so people can hear you through the microphone.
I'm moving slow, but I'll get there.
We're not in a hurry. And just for folks who are here to speak on these, on these items, as well as later on items, we do ask folks to try to keep their comments to about three minutes, just so that we can keep the agenda moving along. Happy to see you here tonight. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Addie Wilson, and I live at 104 Starlight Drive in Carboro. And we've been, this is an ongoing problem that we've been battling backwards and forward for about 20, 20, 25 years on getting speed bumps, because folks fly up and down that little Starlight Drive. And they had a police there to monitor traffic at one time, but he came the wrong time of the day. Somebody, and I'm afraid somebody's going to get killed in front of my house or at the very end of the street. And that's mainly our concern, and there were some neighbors of ours who could not come to this meeting because of the COVID virus that they've had, or they were out of town for graduation. But on behalf of the majority of the Starlight Drive, we'd rather have speed bumps and no sidewalks. Sidewalks, to me, is defeating the purpose, because if you put a
Thanks for your patience with us while we got rid of the, got through the social media blitz. Council members, first thing I wanted to raise is a potential adjustment to the agenda and just to see if y'all are okay with this adjustment. And this would be to move item G2, which is related to the Arts Center, up earlier in the agenda. So I'm thinking after the consent agenda. Is there any problem with any objection to that? Okay. All right, so we'll do that and Mr. Manager will move G2 up to right after the consent agenda. Also sorry to say that our poet laureate Fred Joyner contacted me late this afternoon and said that unfortunately something came up and he wouldn't be able to join us tonight. So we'll hope to see our poet laureate next week. I don't have any proclamations to read. I did issue a few proclamations last week, including as I mentioned before Pride Month. Also it is Immigrant Heritage Month and we just observed Gun Violence Awareness Day. And there were some appropriate events over the weekend related to that that I hope you all will read more about. So we'll move on now to announcement of upcoming meetings. Mary?
On June 8th at 6:00 PM, there will be an Arts Committee meeting. That will be virtually. Let's see, then the next one is June 9th at 6:30. It's also virtual, the Stormwater Advisory Commission meeting. Then June 13th at 7:00 PM, virtually will be the Recreation and Parks Commission meeting. And then after that, the next Town Council meeting will be June 14th at 7:00 PM here in the same location we're at now. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Mary. And tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, also a virtual meeting of, it's the monthly meeting of the Durham Chapel Hill Carboro Metropolitan Planning Organization Board. Just so council members know, we are welcoming a new Executive Director of the MPO, who I think brings a lot of enthusiasm, especially for, as you know, the recent changes we made to our long-term transportation plan in the region and trying to make some real advances in transportation planning in the Western Triangle that responds to our interests around climate action. So he is coming onboard this month. Any other town meetings that we need to know about? Susan?
Thank you, Mayor. John, you may need to help me out with this, but the Economic Sustainability Commission meeting was canceled for June 8th due to a lack of a quorum and rescheduled for June 15th at 6 o'clock. That will be in-person. And then I also wanted to mention that the ESC will be going on a field trip on June 10th to meet with staff in Raleigh and Cary about economic development projects. And that will include a tour of the Box Yard RTP. Thank you for organizing all that, John.
Thank you, Susan. Sammy?
Monday, June 13th, the Family Success Alliance will be meeting virtually at 1:00 PM.
All right, thank you all. We'll next move on to public comment on items that are not on our printed agenda. And I think I have three folks signed up in that category. And we're gonna just go in the order that folks signed up. And that first person is Addie Wilson. Ms. Addie, are you here? Are you ready to speak? If you'll join it, come on up to the podium up here so people can hear you through the microphone. All right, we're not in a hurry. And just for folks who are here to speak on these, on these items, as well as later on items, we do ask folks to try to keep their comments to about three minutes, just so that we can keep the agenda moving along. Happy to see you here tonight. Welcome.
Thank you.
What can we do for you?
My name is Addie Wilson and I live at 104 Starlight Drive in Carboro. And we've been, this is an ongoing problem that we've been going backwards and forward for about 20, 20, 25 years on getting speed bumps because folks fly up and down that little Starlight Drive. And they had a police there to monitor traffic at one time, but he came the wrong time of the day. Somebody, and I'm afraid somebody's gonna get killed in front of my house or at the very end of the street. And that's mainly our concern. And there were some neighbors of ours who could not come to this meeting because of the COVID virus that they've had, or they were out of town for graduation. But on behalf of the majority of the Starlight Drive, we'd rather have speed bumps and no sidewalks. Sidewalks to me is defeating the purpose. Because if you put a sidewalk, that's gonna make them speed even more. Even the police fly up and down Starlight Drive. And we've, I've reported it and they said, "Well, you need to call soon as they start driving fast." What good is it gonna do?
Thank you so much.
But that's our man.
Yep.
Okay, I guess my three minutes is up. You said all right.
No, you sound good. No, thank you for raising that with us, Addie. I know that, that council has heard on this issue before and would appreciate probably getting an update of the status. Barbara?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't mean to cut you off. So Ms. Wilson, you and your neighbors are in receipt of a letter or some letters?
Well, some of us got letters and some got letters and no diagram of the pictures. I got a letter, but no diagram of the picture, whether it's sidewalks or, or speed bumps.
Okay.
Can you tell us about the letter? Can you tell us what was in your letter?
I don't actually recall as to what all was on it. I do know that.
And if there's a staff member here or somebody that knows about the letter that went out, I mean, that would be helpful as well.
Well, I'm not sure how much Dorothy, my neighbor, crossed the street.
Oh, she might, she might come through with something else. Dorothy's gonna speak?
Yes.
Okay, no problem.
Because he done already told me my three minutes was up.
Okay, Ms. Wilson, okay, Ms. Wilson.
Your time's not up. I thought you were finished. I'm sorry. We're very happy to hear from you about this because it is a good time for an update about that project. The, Mr. Manager, do you know if we, if staff has information about the status of those speed bumps? I think we got something a few months ago, but it's been a while.
Yeah, there's a letter that went out in May, the follow-up on this. It sounds like there was some confusion. Tina can give you, come on Tina. We'll provide a latest update, but I think it was some confusion about the letter, but Tina can talk more in detail.
Good evening, council members. Hi.
Hi, Tina. If you'd be sure to speak into the mic. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We did send out letters, I think it was three weeks ago or slightly more than that. And the letters included two, two different set of options. One had to do with the number of speed tables, whether it was just the one, which is what we had been discussing originally, or the opportunity to have three tables. And the second question was whether there was interest in having a sidewalk or what we had been calling a pedestrian lane, which would have been a marked kind of carter on the actual road pavement. So we sent those out and then we included a third attachment where folks could check the boxes to indicate which option of each of the two questions that they would prefer with, with stamped envelopes. Unfortunately, we've only received two responses so far. We sent out, I think, 35.
Thank you, Tina. Can you remind, wasn't there also a survey that went out earlier in this process that kind of polled neighbors about what their preferences were?
We did. We did send out survey information a while ago. And that included an option, a design with one speed table and some delineers to make the corners a little bit more narrow. Upon conversations with our town engineer, he thought that that was perhaps problematic and recommended if there was really a concern with speed, we should go with three speed tables instead of just one. And that would be the better way to address it. Knowing that that was a design change, that was really the impetus for feeling we needed to circle back to the neighbors again.
Okay. And thank you for that. Addie mentioned that some of her neighbors would have been here to talk more about this and we heard from some of them today by email. Who, and they shared the thoughts, the same thoughts that Maddie shared about the preference, their preference to have were really to focus on the speed tables or the speed bumps over the sidewalks.
If I may, I think that was the way we had laid out the letter is that our thinking was that we would start with the speed tables. And I believe we do have funding in the, in the budget to put those in this summer if there's interest. And then we could kind of see how that works before, before deciding if another piece of infrastructure was needed.
Sammy, I had Randy first and then you next.
Yeah. Addie, thank you. I've heard from Starlight neighbors. I've heard from Starlight neighbors and this is an ongoing concern. I'm gonna ask that, you know, I know staff went and they did the mailings and they've called and talked to folks. I'm actually going to ask that because several neighbors are differently abled on Starlight, that staff maybe go door to door and, and personally make sure that we capture everyone's interest. I think the question about pedestrian lane may have different views. And I would want us to be sure that we captured exactly what folks were, were thinking in a way that they feel comfortable telling us. So if, if staff would, would please do that because it's a, it's a special population on Starlight. Thank you.
Sammy and then Barbara?
Tina, could you just share what is the response that would trigger the three? Are you, is there a certain threshold of number of responses that you're looking for? Or what is the, what is it that you need to be able to implement the speed tables?
Well, of the two responses that we received, one was requested the single table and the other the three tables. So something I think that would lean us in one direction versus the other.
Because I know there are few houses. So is it like 50%? And if so, is that like, will that be like four houses you need to hear from or like?
We sent out the mailing to 35 households.
35 houses.
Well, let me, let me be clear about that. We sent out the letter to everyone on Starlight Drive. And I think the back of properties on Broad Street. So we, using our standard practice, we sent it out to property owners. And if the property was rented, we sent it out to the resident and the owner. So.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a, in the letter, does it describe what, what it is that would trigger the going forward for the neighbors to know exactly what they need to give a response about?
We, we didn't go into a discussion of what would trigger a majority versus a super majority of the speed tables.
Is it, is it up to us to make that decision? And, or is it, I thought we had a very clear description of the process for that.
Well, I think, and I don't, I don't wanna, the feeling that I'm kind of getting is that there's interest of just moving forward and doing something. We did try, you know, we brought up the single speed table, may have been two years ago because it was at the beginning of COVID. There was a request to explore this question of the pedestrian lane. And we were asked to go door to door and we tried that. And we had, we, I think, reached out to maybe half of the residents and the response was kind of 50/50. So there was not really enough of clear direction for staff to feel comfortable to make a decision on that point. We had not explored the sidewalk as a feasible option at that point. And again, when we started talking with the engineer, we talked about that and he was able to put together to evaluate the two different sides of the street and to come up with a, with an estimate. And so we thought, well, let's, let's share that with the community and see if that's something that would be preferable. So.
I'm just wanting to make sure we don't give you more direction because we've already been through this process before. And maybe, I know one way to do it is, as we did on Oak Street was, or Oak Avenue, we did a temporary speed bump there. And that isn't as much of a commitment as a proper speed bump. And maybe that way we would be getting the response from the community that we want. But it sounds like there is a need there and we need to move forward. And it really is upon us as a council to make that decision one way or another and then get the feedback from the community depending on what we do.
Thanks, Sammy. Barbara?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and so my question is, I'm going back to what Councilmember Haven O'Donnell just said about just making that contact. Is there any way to pull together maybe some type of outside neighborhood gathering, you know, in that community? You know, just to get folks together and, and talk, you know, more about it since we only have a couple of folks here today? And maybe there could be a better response potentially?
Sure, we'd be happy to do that.
Right. Thank you, Tina.
Okay, I think on this same topic is, Addie mentioned Dorothy is here. Come on up. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, Dorothy S. Well, I live at 104 Starlight across from Ms. Addie. And we spend a lot of time yelling from one window to the other. We're a very close neighborhood. We know exactly what's happening in the neighborhood. The letter that I received had options and there was no, no option, right? It was only the options of one, two, or three speed tables, or what kind of sidewalks and where the sidewalks. So it wasn't, there was no option. So I immediately ran over to Ms. Addie's house. Did you get this? She got the letter without the pictures. The letter without the pictures are not helpful because there's no context as you asked about the context. She called Barbara, Speed Doll. We had a conversation. I am renting my, I do most of the work in the house. I feel like I own the house over there, just fixed the porch. So, but I didn't feel like as the non-homeowner to make that decision, sent the letter to my landlord. She's non-responsive. She's probably not one of the two that sends it in. I'm a researcher at UNC Chapel Hill. If I got a response rate of two out of 35, I'd probably be fired. I would not make a decision based on that. I can tell you I have a dog and I go out at 5:30, 6:00 in the morning. And I have to huddle up against the, I don't know what it would be called, the grass, because they're flying. And it's all night, it's all day. So if the speed bumps, let's try it. I like your idea. I think with the sidewalks, I'm, I'm not convinced like where are we gonna park? The college kids are moving in. They come in with six cars. You have guessed where do they park? We also, has there been an assessment of the multi-generational families that are running businesses that need to park? Where are they exactly where, where you want to put the sidewalk? So anyway, I'm just here to support my neighbors and if we can do a community meeting, we'll throw a barbecue and do it in my backyard. It's big enough. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for being here. So it sounds like we have some good information from staff. Mr. Manager, I wonder if you have thoughts on how to proceed? Is there a need for staff to do more data collection as we've heard about trying to reach out more, a little more directly to neighbors or have an event? Or do you want some direction from Town Council about just moving ahead on one option or another or what's your preference?
Well, I heard the option of going door to door. So let me talk with staff to see if we can arrange for that. And we'll report back to council where we are with that decision.
Sammy and then Danny?
My only concern with that, Mr. Manager, is it sounds like that was already attempted. So I think we were trying to do something different because something different has to happen. So I would be more interested in either the community meeting and if that doesn't pan out, then actually doing the, the speed bump or two, two speed bumps.
Danny?
Yeah, my, pardon, my sense is that the amount of homeowners we've heard from here is, is representative of a pretty strong engagement process. I would like to see some speed bumps on Starlight Drive. I, you know, I was recently knocking on related doors for different campaigns and I heard this from half a dozen residents. And it's a two-year-old complaint and I would just really like to see, you know, I, that blind curve hard to the left is a car cut through. It's not a pedestrian cut through. I'm supportive of sidewalks, but we all have seen folks running from Lloyd to Broad. And I think at this point it's time to offer these neighbors a little bit of relief if we are able. So I would, I particularly would like to see somewhere between one and three speed bumps put on that street without too much more engagement.
At least are.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Just a couple of questions. Well, it's basically one, as I'm understanding this process. Should, as I understand it, the letter was sent for folks who don't own the homes. It's a renter was sent to the folks living there, also the owner of the property. In the case where we have opposite opinions of what needs to happen on those two, which voice is prioritized? Or is that even a part of the conversation? Like, for example, I'm a renter. I say I want three speed bumps. The owner says, "I don't want any speed bumps." Which one is prioritized?
Let me ask Tina if she can respond to that.
Well, right now, I could answer. Right now what's prioritized is no speed bumps because that's what it is.
Tina, do you have more information about whether that's been discussed, whether there's some preference given to renters versus owners?
We haven't dealt, I, I think we were really just trying to get a majority of responses.
Trying to get some responses.
Moving forward. So I'm not sure, I think in some of our earlier engagements, we really focused on the residents, not so much the property owners. When it came to the sidewalk, it did seem appropriate to, to include the property owners just, just for full disclosure. So that was the reason for that.
Tina, you mentioned in your comments that there is money in the budget already to do something this summer. If that's the will of the board or the community or staff's professional judgment or whatever it is. Does that mean money to do, to install these kind of test speed tables of the kind we've, that Sammy described and that we've seen on James Street, for example? Or is that money to do something more than that? Or do you know?
I'm trying to remember the exact, the exact correspondence because we did discuss this. After we drafted the letter, we did hear an interest of potentially doing a temporary table instead of an asphalt table. The information I have from public works, and I don't recall the exact figures off the top of my head, but that the asphalt table is cheaper and in their opinion, you could remove, you could mill it if you needed to. If there is a preference to do a temporary table, I think we could, we could look for that. It would probably, it might be a little bit more noisy based on some of our experiences elsewhere. It would depend on whether we could definitely find the kind that's on Oak Avenue or whether we do something a little bit more similar to what's on James Street. Not necessarily the exact model on James Street. That's a little bit more of a bump. But depending on the exact model, it's, it's possible that the temporary would be a little bit louder.
So if, Mr. Manager, if direction were to come from the council, it sounds like there's some interest both from neighbors and I'm also reading something into the lack of response to attempts by town staff to generate thoughts about this, right? If there were direction from council to move ahead with one to three speed tables, either temporary or otherwise, according to SPAT staff's best professional judgment, and just go ahead and move ahead with doing that. Is that a reasonable way forward, y'all? Susan and then Randy?
Yeah, I, I would be in favor of that and I would also encourage the neighborhood to still have that meeting and have some barbecue together. Because perhaps by the time you all met, you would have that opportunity to see how these temporary speed bumps are working. And that can factor into the decision on how to move forward.
Randy?
Yeah, okay, two things. One, before you move ahead with the speed bumps, the speed tables, whether they be the asphalt or whatever, please check in with Ellen Perry because her wheelchair cannot get over those speed bumps and there is no sidewalk. So for Ellen, she would probably need, you know, three, four feet on the side between the grass and the speed table in order to be able to maneuver her chair. So please, let's not just, you know, go headlong without that consideration. And that's one of the reasons I'm saying that having a neighborhood gathering is a great idea. But it shouldn't be separate from meeting with individual folks because number one, they have individual needs that we need to know about. Number two, you know, if they get together in a group and you have folks who are saying, "Well, we want sidewalk and we don't want sidewalk," you know, that they may not be, feel comfortable being able to say that. So I'm just saying that I, I, I think it's really important to touch base with each individual to find out where they are coming from in addition to any community thing that we might recommend. And thirdly, it sounds like we're separating out the discussion of speed tables and sidewalks. Is that true?
What I heard is that there's money in the budget to do speed tables and that a conversation about sidewalk would also have to be a future budget conversation. So we might as well just focus on the potential for speed tables now.
Right. And so, and folks in the neighborhood need to know that.
That was, that was actually part of the letter to say there was no funding identified for the sidewalk yet.
Okay, thank you.
Council members, what's your pleasure? Barbara?
Okay, and I know, Mayor, he's looking at me like you done talked three times, Barbara.
I'm hoping you'll make a motion of some kind.
And I, I just want to go back to what Ms. Wilson said to us about how long it's been already. about how long it's been already. And, you know, I understand about Ms. Perry, and we always have to take that into account. And along with that, I feel like we're in a position that we should try something, and have some movement. Movement and the meeting, or movement and the door-to-door, you know, to get, you know, give folks a chance to see what it's going to be like, see if it's accommodating, see if it works, see if we need to do something different. But because it's been this ongoing issue, I don't want us to use, you know, have too much more time, you know, go by without trying something, whether it be temporary or what. Of course, accommodating, you know, to what Councilmember Haven O'Donnell said. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
It can be.
You're going to have to restate it for me.
Okay, so my motion is that we move ahead. Because it has been so long, that we should go ahead and move ahead. I would say temporary. And along with that, try to plan some type of neighborhood meeting, maybe after a period of time, or I would guess, you know, give it time, you know, just to see how the neighbors react to it. And that's pretty much my motion.
I'll second that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And don't forget about Ms. Perry. We have to have accommodations for her. Did I say that? Yes.
I'll second that. And Tina, I'll encourage staff to also, the temporary speed tables on Oak Avenue were supposed to be temporary, I believe, back in the day. So we may already have those speed tables. If we can think of those as, we need to convert them into permanent, and we could use those for Starlight. Does that make sense?
Change order.
Ah, change order.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, staff can, if that's, as a friendly amendment, staff look into being able to do that possibly. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to, Barbara and Sammy, I'm going to repeat what I think the motion is.
I'd like to know, just join in, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, that's fine. I think I got what, I think I was taking some notes. So the motion is to move ahead with planning, I'm going to say, one to three temporary speed tables at staff discretion on Starlight Drive. While also, I'm assuming you mean simultaneously, planning a neighborhood meeting.
Yeah.
Addressing questions about accessibility. And exploring the potential reuse of the temporary tables on Oak Avenue. Get your motion?
Yeah, and with the accommodations.
Right, for accessibility, for wheelchairs.
Folks that move around differently. Yep.
Mr. Manager, is that clear from you?
Yes, it's clear, thank you.
That sounds like a clear notion, motion?
You're like, barely clear.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. Motion by Barbara, second by Sammy. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Matter passes unanimously. Addy, Dorothy, thank you so much for being here. We're going to move ahead with speed tables, it sounds like. And I think the barbecue is a great idea, as you heard. It's an opportunity for more information.
You too, have a good night.
Thanks, Addy. Okay. The next person I have signed up, there's not a topic listed, so I'll just say the name, Angelica Dabila. Might have just signed in, to sign in.
Who is it, Danny?
Yes, I can, I think it was.
That's okay. It happens.
It happens a lot.
Yeah, that happens all the time, no problem.
Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Yes, I'm glad you're here. Okay. Next, we have Satyria Shepperson. And after that, we'll hear from Courtney Williams. Can you say that again? So Courtney will go first? Great, come on up, Courtney, welcome. And is it Mick Williams, or Williams? Mick Williams, great. Thanks for being here tonight. And as I mentioned to the previous speakers, we try to aim for about three minutes. I'll time you, but I try not to be too.
Okay. This microphone, okay. I'm sorry, just pulling up notes. Okay, this is dedicated to Councilwoman Barbara Fushi. And I'm going to read "Still I Rise" by Maya Angelou. "You may write down in history with your bitter, twisted lies. You may trod me in the very dirt, but still, like dust, I'll rise. Does my sassiness upset you? Why are you beset with gloom? 'Cause I walk like I've got oil wells pumping in my living room. Just like moons and like suns with the certainty of tides, just like hopes springing high, still, I'll rise. Did you want to see me broken, bowed head and lowered eyes? Shoulders falling down like teardrops weakened by my soulful cries? Does my haughtiness offend you? Don't you take it awful hard, 'cause I laugh like I've got gold mines digging in my own backyard? You may shoot me with your words, you may cut me with your eyes, you may kill me with your hatefulness, but still, like air, I'll rise. Does my sexiness upset you? Does it come as a surprise that I dance like I've got diamonds at the meeting of my thighs? Out of the huts of history shame, I rise. Up from a past that's rooted in pain, I rise. I'm a black ocean, leaping and wide, welling and swelling, I bear in the tide. Leaving behind nights of terror and fear, I rise. Into a daybreak that's wondrously clear, I rise. Bringing the gifts that my ancestors gave, I am the dream and the hope of the slave. I rise, I rise, I rise."
Thank you, Courtney. It's a classic. Thank you so much. Okay, next is Satyria. Welcome, Satyria.
Thank you again, Courtney, for that. Good evening to everyone. Mr. Mayor, I'm glad to see you back. Councilwoman Fushi, I asked Courtney to read that, so I can try to respect my three minutes. I'm going to do good tonight. But I wanted to take this time to say how much I appreciate you, how thankful I am for your voice. I was in Maryland at the last council meeting, and I could see your frustration. And as much as you have been fighting for me and the black people, specifically, and brown people that have been affected by the closing of President Dale Maine, tonight, I'm here to give my three minutes to you, to tell you that I see you, and to ask the council with every ounce of respect, that when you see your colleague walk out of a room, and you continue to let her walk alone, that that gives me less and less hope that you could protect me when you can't protect someone who sits with you every week. Mr. Mayor, you weren't here on that day, and the last time Sammy went in to attack Senator Fushi, you stepped up and you said something, and for that, I am grateful. Sammy, if you choose not to represent Barbara, you choose not to represent me. And the micro and macro aggression is heartbreaking to see and to witness. And if you don't want to represent black people in this town, you should resign. Because as of now, we're here. And if you don't want to respect your councilwoman, who is a representative of me, you should resign. The attacks have to stop. It's hurtful to watch. It's toxic. And to Danny, and to Randy, and Susan, and now, Ali Azar, please stop letting her walk out alone. That does not give me hope. If you don't fight for her, why in the hell would I think you would fight for me?
Satyria, thank you for that comment. You sure you want to talk?
Yeah.
Okay. Sammy?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We'll move on with our agenda soon, but Sammy, please.
Yeah, I spoke up last time about the effect that super PACs have on our electoral process. And that was what I meant when I spoke about that, and that's all I meant. And I'm sorry if some people don't see the effect of that degree and that amount of record-breaking amounts.
Guys, you stop at the apology.
Don't talk about what people understand and what they don't understand, Sammy.
I'm explaining myself. I have a right to speak.
You're such a hater.
All right. Not hating, I'm not hating.
I'm here tonight, stop at the apology.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to explain myself.
It should never even come up again, Mayor.
But I don't know what, what is the problem? I'm talking about the effect that super PACs.
You apologize, you stop at the apology. You just apologize. You can't explain while you continue to talk.
Sammy, just wait, please.
It's racist, and it's supremacy.
Satyria, thank you for being here tonight. We've heard you, okay?
Look, I mean, I apologize for what you guys may have heard, but I am talking about super PACs.
I think it's better to just move on. All right.
Let's get this right.
All right, we're going to have a recess for a couple minutes, until folks are ready to resume.
Thanks, everyone, for holding on for a few minutes. We're going to get back to business here. We do have some important items on the agenda tonight and a lot of important decisions to make. I will say that during the recess, we heard each other out quite a bit. And I'm going to be trying to continue those conversations after this meeting. And I want folks to know who are here today at this dais and in the audience that I've offered myself to be committed to helping do that and try to move us a little further along in this conversation than we can really get in this space here. So, again, thank folks for being in the audience and waiting on us while we stepped outside for a few to run some things out with each other. I'd really like to move on. Is that okay?
I wanted to ask for us to pass the consent agenda.
Thank you, Randy. We're going to move on to the consent agenda, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Randy's ready with a motion to approve it even. So, please, please proceed.
The first item is approval of abstracted votes cast at the May 17, 2022 special election. The purpose of this item is for the Town Council to consider approval of the abstracted votes cast at the May 17, 2022 special election. The next item is the approval of the March 8, 2022 meeting minutes. Next item is donation to the fire department and an FY 2021-2022 adopted budget amendment. The purpose of this item is to recognize and appropriate $455 in contributions to the fire department. The next item is request to authorize the town manager to extend the contract with Rami Kemp and Associates for South Greensboro Street Sidewalk Preliminary Engineering Services. And the purpose of this item is for the -- to authorize the town manager to execute a contract extension with RKA to complete the preliminary design and associated bid documents. The next item is request to submit a STIP amendment to allow -- allocate local discretionary funds to Jones Creek Greenway. Purpose of this agenda item is to request authorization for staff to request an amendment to NCDOT State Transportation Improvement Program STIP to allocate local discretionary funds to the Jones Creek Greenway project to allow the project to move forward. That's all the items.
Thanks, Mr. Manager. Can I clarify that on item number five, the STIP amendment discretionary funds, that staff has come forward with an amended resolution to correct an error in the original resolution? Is that right?
Correct, yes.
So, can we assume that with a motion I expect to be coming from Randy any moment now, that that amended resolution will be the one that's adopted with the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Randy?
Yes, so I'd like to move items one through five on the consent agenda with the acknowledgement of the change or the amendment to the discretionary funds for Jones Creek Greenway.
Thank you, Randy. Is there a second? Second by Danny. It's been moved by Randy, seconded by Danny, that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Matter passes unanimously. All right, as we agreed earlier, folks, we're going to move on to the -- we're actually going to move up item G2, the art center item, to right now. So, Mr. Manager.
This is a request to issue Special Use Permit A to utilize existing building for Art Center at 400 Roberson Street. First item of this agenda item is for the Town Council to consider making a donation, a decision on the request for a Special Use Permit A application for the Art Center to renovate the existing building at 400 Roberson Street. And Marty Ruth, by Development Review Administrator, will open the item.
Welcome, Marty.
Thank you.
Yes, Nick.
Let me note to the record that Mr. Councilmember Passata--
And Nick, can you use your microphone, please?
Councilmember Passata has reviewed all of the prior proceedings in this matter, which would qualify him to vote on this matter. And so, I say that for the record. That's correct, Mr. Councilmember Passata.
Okay. Thanks for confirming that, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have much to say, just to kind of set the stage for what we're about to do. And Nick, please jump in as needed. This being the first time we've done this under the new format. So, the public hearing was closed last time. The council gave staff direction in terms of what types of condition, findings of fact, et cetera, to put together in a decision. So, the decision was included in your package and is now in front of us on the screen tonight for consideration. And the only thing I will note, Councilmember Slade offered an email, I believe it was earlier today, I saw it earlier today, so, and then shared it with council members this afternoon. So, this revised version incorporates what Councilmember Slade was suggesting, revised number five, and then, under the decision itself, the language regarding widening the sidewalk to 10 feet. With that, I'm just kind of setting the stage. See if Nick has anything else to add, and then the applicant may wish to engage in a little discussion about the sidewalk matter.
Okay. Thank you, Marty. Anyone from the applicant team need to make comments? Or not? Up to you. Ken, come on up and introduce yourself, please.
My name is Ken Reiter. I live at 303 Rock Garden Road here in Carrow. I unfortunately was not at the meeting last week nor part of the public hearing, but as you all know, I've developed other properties here in Carrow, helping the Art Center develop their site. We're just here to answer any questions, help you with your final decision. We appreciate your time and consideration. So, I'll stay up here and answer any questions if you have regarding the sidewalk or any other matters.
I guess I just have one question, which is, is the applicant comfortable with what we've offered here in terms of the amendments and the condition?
All right. We are not supportive of adding the sidewalk at this time, mainly because it intersects with some, really some utility work. There's some signage, there's some landscaping and stuff like that. I think we can finish the construction and development plan accommodating for the 10 feet if at some point it could go in in the future, but it really is an awkward setting where it comes there. There's about, it only goes about 20 feet or maybe 30 feet. So, we'd prefer not to have it as a condition for the SUP.
Thanks, Ken, for clarifying that. Okay. Sammy?
So, Ken, the explanation that you all shared for not wanting to do the sidewalk had to do with the magnolias mainly, and the portion that I'm talking about here doesn't have the magnolias. As you know, the 10-foot is our land use ordinance requirement. And so, to the extent that what your explanation was aligns with the portion that we're okay with you continuing with a non-conforming situation, the other portion, there hasn't really been an explanation for why you would want that to be non-conforming.
Yeah. In the section that you're talking about, the 10 feet does fit, but it only goes for about maybe 20 or 30 feet. So, it ends at Libicotton and doesn't go anywhere, and to the south, it doesn't go anywhere. And it's kind of an awkward configuration of that intersection there. So, it just, it doesn't really, until there's, I think, a larger plan of probably if we put the 10 feet there, that may not be where we want it in five or 10 years or something like that. So, our proposal was to not have it as a condition, but not put anything that's in the way. So, when it is time to do it, then you'd have plenty of room to put it, put something in there.
So, the reason why we take advantage of situations like this is because we don't have, we rely on developers to build iteratively what our vision is for the downtown. And in this case, 10 feet is what we would like our sidewalks to be. So, while it is true, 10 feet, except for Libicotton, it's actually a little more than 10 feet, it would actually continue Libicotton to that corner. While it is true that other sidewalks don't meet that, in the future, there will be developments. And what we don't want to happen is that because it doesn't exist now, we didn't pursue it at a time, and then, and then we're, it's kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy. We're not doing it because it doesn't exist now, but if we don't do it now, then it won't exist to justify future projects, if you see what I mean.
Yeah. What we're saying is we would set apart the side, the space for it, but not actually put that piece in there because we're not, we're not sure. That intersection might get adjusted at some point, right? Because that's kind of an awkward configuration for that intersection.
Mm-hmm. Ken, can I follow up with that point, to try to meet both interests here, if possible? When you say set aside the space for such a sidewalk in the future, when you know better, like, what do you, do you mean something formal like that? Is that a D or easement of some kind?
I'm not sure what the appropriate easement or, you know, item would be. We'd have something on the plans that would, that would basically set that aside. Like when we did on Shelton Station, we set aside certain space. We actually put in that sidewalk there because it was, it was a logical, you know, extension of what was happening. And I think we actually, we actually provided an easement for that component there, or just to make sure that was developed at some time.
Yeah.
Built it sometime.
Maybe a question for the attorney?
One more second. Yeah, Sammy.
Nick, is there a way in which to, because part of it is like a commitment to set aside the easement, but the other is the actual cost of the sidewalk itself, like a bond for when appropriate or not, we could make use of that money to build the 10 feet? Does that make sense? To receive, or do we have payment in lieu for the sidewalk? That's a staff question. Sorry, Nick.
So, without speaking to how Ken might respond to the concept, I will say, conceptually, we could redraft the conditions such that, you know, the estimated cost of constructing that sidewalk be held by the town. For, you know, with other projects, we've typically done that for some, what is determined to be a reasonable amount of time, and if the town does move forward within that time, the money's there and we can use it. And if a certain amount of time passes, then the town kind of says, okay, we didn't get to it, here's your money back. And Nick, I think we've put that time limit on it just as a reasonableness factor in the past, you know? So, I'll leave it at that.
Could the time limit be set so that if the reconfiguration thing doesn't happen, then we just build a 10-foot sidewalk?
Right. And the money, and the money would be there for some amount of time that you may determine tonight, yes, if I've heard you correctly.
And we, and we could just build it after that set amount of time if--
Oh, yeah, we could still build it. There would be-- I would, yeah, I didn't address that part. I think it could either be a right-of-way dedication to where there's just additional, literally town right-of-way granted, you know, prior to construction plan approval or by way of plat, or an easement, one way or, you know, one mechanism or the other, would set that stage in perpetuity. You know, it would be the town's right then to build something. The money part was what I was talking about with respect to the time, Kimona.
Yeah. And so, in clarity, the money part, what you're saying is after that time period, if the conditions that Ken is alluding to might, might happen in terms of how the road is reconfigured--
Right.
We never get to that reconfiguration, we could still use that money to cut our losses, so to say, and build a 10-foot as--
Like we're contemplating tonight.
Yes.
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
And all we're saying is let's set, let's, rather than build it, let's just set that aside, and if you decide that's exactly where it needs to be, the money's there. But if you don't, we haven't put something in place that doesn't connect, because it really is just an awkward configuration.
Okay. That sounds reasonable to me, if staff feels like it could come up with the appropriate language for that payment and easement.
Okay. Yeah, Nick and I may have to huddle with Trish, and can we maybe move on to one item and then bring it back after that with a revised--
Let me take a, I appreciate this back and forth here. It's been very informative and useful. I want to just take a quick temperature check of the rest of the council. Do we want staff to move forward with this idea? I mean, I'm, I'm actually, I support it, so I'll just say that right now. I think it's a good idea to address the need for us to continue to build out our sidewalk network in the way that our ordinance anticipates, while also understanding Ken's point about kind of appropriateness at this time for figuring out exactly what that looks like. Other council members okay with moving forward in that way?
I support it as well.
So, Marty and Nick, if y'all don't mind, in that, we can maybe, and while they're doing that, maybe let's make sure that we don't have further discussion about this item before we move on.
And may I add something? You can confirm that all of your representations that you've made to them is the truth, the whole truth, to the best of your knowledge.
I was not sworn in, yes.
Yes, and that's because he was not sworn in before.
Right.
Sorry for the discipline, but we're getting used to this.
I appreciate that kind of discipline. Thank you, Nick. We want to make sure we're doing what we need to do. Yep. Susan?
I had a couple of really short questions. They're not related to this topic, and so if anybody--
They're related to the art center item?
They are related to art center. Did anybody else have questions on this topic with the sidewalk before I? Okay.
I think right now Marty and Trish and Nick are going to work on that item.
I'd go there.
Yes.
So, I can fill the gap. I have a captive audience right now. These are really quick items. So, first of all, there was some conversation last time about the bike racks that are quite old, and there's also not too many bike racks. And I was hoping that there could be more bike racks and new bike racks. I didn't know if there was any updates in terms of where things are moving on that.
No, no specific update, but I think we talked about, there's, there's quite a wide overhang on the building. So, I think there, don't quote me, I think there's two or three locations currently, and I think there's at least three more, three existing locations that'll be there. So, there's room to put other bike racks there. We just haven't identified specifically, because we've got, again, we don't know where some of the other infrastructure is going yet, so we couldn't pinpoint specific locations. So, that's, we don't have a direct update on that.
Okay. I'm absolutely fine on the locations. Ken, is it correct to say that there will be new bike racks?
Yes.
Okay.
We are replacing the older bike racks.
Okay, great. And I looked at the bike racks at 201 North Greensboro, a project there which is about the same size, and they're talking about 15 bike racks? And that, would that be kind of sort of what you're thinking about in terms of the art center?
There's room to put many bike racks there, but we were not, we didn't, we didn't, we don't have a specific quantity called out other than what was in the development plan.
Okay.
So, I think it's three or four are the exact numbers.
And I do want to say, I appreciate you doing that. It's not a park, you know, this is not a requirement by the LEO, so you're stepping up, and I really appreciate it. And I just think of this as being a great hub, bicycle hub, with that connectivity to the Libicotton, lots of maybe, you know, kids coming and hopefully being able to bicycle. So, I appreciate very much your investment in that, and hopefully it's not--
The bike racks are different than where the Tar Heel bikes are, which is--
Yes.
Which is a separate, so that there's also, there's a, there's more bike racks adjacent to where we're at than just what the art center is doing.
Mm-hmm. And I also want to thank you because I know that the, you know, that you, there's no requirement in terms of having a solar-ready roof. There's no requirement in terms of the EV charging station, so very much appreciate your doing those things as well.
Welcome.
Just one more question, and this is on the buses. There was some discussion last week, and this may be a question for the town, but while I've got you, Ken, I'll just ask you as well. There was conversation last night about the buses coming. There's quite a few buses that will come over the course of the afternoon in different shifts. And right now, the plan was that the buses would go into the parking lot, you know, kind of near the, I guess, near the cemetery side--
Correct.
--turn around, but then come back to Sweet Bay to let the kids off in, in front of the art center? Is that, did I--
Correct. They could be, there could be, I don't think there's technically a loading zone or unloading zone for kids, but just, the concept is areas where it's safe for the children to get on and off could either be in the parking lot, which would have them close to the main entrances, or also drop, and/or drop them off at Sweet Bay, which is probably the shortest path, but would be blocking traffic. So, I think we have two options of how, if there were multiple buses at the same time, there's probably more than one, one place where they could be dropped off.
Mm-hmm. And I guess my question is, why wouldn't, why wouldn't the kids just all be dropped off at the, in the parking lot area in terms of, first of all, the safety of the kids? And also, I think there was concern about the visibility for cars coming up Sweet Bay. The buses would be blocking the visibility. So, I'll just be suggesting and maybe that, that all the kids are actually dropped off--
I think that is the-- I think that is, that is the preferred location.
Okay.
But if, if there were multiple buses at the same time?
They may need to use different.
It could be possible to have them at the, at the same time. But again, it's a very limited time during the day for maybe 15 or 20 minutes in the afternoon, typically when the kids are being dropped off for programs.
I got you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I think we filled up just the right amount of time, Ken.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Susan. So I do see Marty consulting outside the room. I think what's left for us to do on this item is to adopt the findings of fact and make a decision. So we do just need this language about the sidewalk issue.
Okay.
Pause for 10 seconds here and see what happens. Oh, look at that.
Well, I need to clarify a couple.
Sure.
Midstream. One, you know, if you'll bear with me, kind of thinking on the spot here, we're trying to clarify, one, that whether the applicant understands that we're talking about receiving the money, the town receiving the money for some to be determined amount of time, and that if we, the town, in this determined amount of time, choose to build this project, and by this project, I mean what we're talking about. This stretch of sidewalk, utility issues, et cetera, aside, that we would have the money to go do so. Two, that a sealed, you know, an engineer would have to seal a cost estimate, because standing here now, we don't know what amount of money it would cost to build this sidewalk. So that's an unknown. So we would need a professional engineer to give us a, you know, a professionally done estimate to a reasonable amount of money. And three, what was the third thing, Nick? I'm struggling all of a sudden to remember the, the third matter. Trish, do you remember part three?
There would be a dedication of right-of-way or easement?
That's definitely implied. Oh, I remember number three. It's very important, actually. Jeremy, can you please get up here and show your exhibit so that we can enter into the record what we're talking about? Jeremy has done an exhibit, and I just want to make sure, because when we're out in the hallway, just make sure we're all on the same page about what we're talking about.
And Jeremy, is this Jeremy Anderson?
This is Jeremy Anderson.
Jeremy has been sworn in during the public hearing that was held a couple weeks ago.
Marty, I'd be happy to if you can help me drive the computer. All right.
That's good.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Actually, I think it's, all right, it is right here on this exhibit here. It is, what is shown in red is the sidewalk in question.
Right. That was my understanding.
So just to, just to clarify, this is where we are discussing moving from the existing five feet to a compliant 10 feet.
That's correct, yep.
There was another part of the condition that included the little five-foot, six-foot sidewalk on the northeast corner of the building to Liba Cotton. Yes, so that's also is part, part of the condition.
Isn't that part on private property?
That's not our understanding. It would be just in the section in the red. That's all we were talking about. So if there's, if there's additional sidewalk, that's not what our, that's not what our understanding is.
Sammy, why don't I suggest that we?
Yeah, we could just do the corner, that's fine. I mean, it does extend onto your property, so it's probably beyond the land use ordinance anyway, but the corner one is, yeah, you guys got it.
Thanks for the exhibit, Jeremy. It's helpful.
What I, what I would suggest to move things tonight is to maybe put five years and a certain dollar amount cap, and that should be sufficient to move things along, but I'm not sure if that is.
I think the concern that our staff and attorney are going to have is that dollar amount, and whether that's sufficient to cover what may be an engineer's professional estimate of what it would cost to put a sidewalk there, given that you've noted there may be some utility issues and, you know? Nick, you have a look on your face.
You know, this idea holds up a final decision.
Right.
Right?
If we don't make it tonight, if we don't finalize the idea tonight.
Well, correct. I mean, in other words, we can't just have an open-ended sum of money, you know, unspecified, you know? I mean, just keep that in mind in terms of your decision-making.
So I would like to move the approval of the decision to approve this building as is, without monetary consideration for the 10-foot sidewalk. I am, I really recognize where Sammy is coming from here, and I do agree that we owe it to the public to put every single project through its paces and to try and make things conform to what, I mean, we have good reasons for 10 feet, and we all recognize that 10 feet are really good reasons. Paris, New York, the great walking cities of the world are beset with five-foot corners because they have built around public projects that have added revenue and reduced car traffic and made access easier. And this is what I think that we are, we are considering here. And so what I'm hearing from our staff and our legal counsel is that it's, it's difficult to see an end to opening this process. And just, I mean, honestly, with truly deep respect for being really rigorous with our processes, this seems like a wonderful project for a wonderful, longtime town partner in a better location than they had previously considered, and I would really hate for us to, like, sit by on red tape. I would move to approve this.
I would second.
But Nick, are you saying?
Hold on one second. Sammy, wait, hold on one second. So who just said second? Okay. So Danny has made a motion that we, and I just want to make sure, Nick, that I'm getting this right, since this is the first time I think we've done one of these facts, findings of fact things, that we move, Danny is moving approval of the attached decision, which is the finding of fact and the decision of the council to approve.
Which one? We got two of them.
Attachment A decision within Agenda Item 22-194.
Oh, the one, the one originally supplied to you.
Yes.
Simple enough.
No amendment.
Thank you, I understand, I understand.
But Danny has moved approval of the attachment, which is the decision in favor of the project as is. ELSAR has seconded. Now we can have some additional discussion. Sammy.
So Nick, I think, I don't want to put words into my colleague's mouth, but the expediency that is sought here is in part a consequence of miss, or the understanding of how long this specific request might take. Are we talking about needing to wait one meeting or over the summer, or what would it take?
Well, I don't know. I mean, well, what Marty was suggesting is that we get some engineer to assess what that cost would be, so you'd have a specific number. I have no idea how long that would take.
It could be over the summer. Okay. Well, I mean, my, my main concern is that the land use ordinance speaks of us having 10-foot sidewalks, and the applicant has provided good justification for the parts where the trees exist, but so far, there is no written justification for the other parts. And for that reason, I don't find that the application complies with all applicable requirements for the land use ordinance, Item 2 under conclusions.
Question, Nick.
Well.
The estimate of the cost is one issue, which is kind of the hard part.
Correct.
The other is what applicant has already said that they're willing to agree to, which is either an easement or a dedication of right-of-way to, for a future sidewalk, standing apart from who ends up building or paying for that sidewalk. Is that something that is, I mean, we've talked about doing that.
Well, perhaps, but, you know, procedurally, right now, you have a motion, an emotion that is seconded. I know you're having a discussion about it unless someone modifies that.
Okay.
I mean, you know, you've got something on the floor that if it passes, it moots what you're talking about.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from council members?
I do just.
ELSAR?
Well, quick, just for my, just for my understanding, what you're saying is, in order to consider the, or move forward tonight, we would have to have a concrete number that we can put in there. And until we have that concrete number, we're not going to be able to, to make a final decision on this, kicking it back possibly months.
That's, that's, that's my view.
Yeah. All right. Just wanted to make sure I'm clear on that fact.
Sammy.
And, and that's using the approach suggested by the applicant in terms of dedicated easement and the recost put up front. The alternative is what I was proposing originally, which is abiding by the land use ordinance, which requires a 10-foot sidewalk unless some kind of justification exists. And that's, the onus is on the applicant, and, and I would encourage us to consider making my suggested language what we include in there to align our decision with our land use ordinance, which requires a 10-foot sidewalk in the downtown. The justification given by the applicant does not give a reason for this corner. It speaks of the magnolia trees and protecting them. There are no magnolia trees given on that corner.
Thank you, Sammy. So the, Danny.
The justification for the applicant does concern DOT street signs that exist within the current right-of-way utility construction that may be implicated in a way that they don't currently understand. I just want to be very clear on the record that we are talking about potentially 60 square feet of sidewalk, holding up months of money and development. And while this, this is a very, like, this is the right way to approach this. We should be this strenuous with this. In this case, we can all visualize this intersection. We know the signs that are there. We know the fire hydrant is there. We, we know that, like, putting this into an indefinite analysis of removing those obstacles is not to the purpose of helping this really good town partner move into the best space that they have found as expeditiously as possible. And in that spirit, having never once had to pass another person at that corner on foot or on bicycle, I would move that we just continue to move this forward.
So there's a motion by Danny, second by ELSAR, that we approve the decision as provided in the agenda packet. Is there any further discussion? Okay. And just to Sammy's point, I'll say that, that the motion, the, the decision, the findings of fact, would say that the council is in fact finding that the applicant has met what's required, among other things.
And if I may note, paragraph four is the critical finding with regard to compliance with the ordinance, and doesn't say anything about sidewalks. It provides a laundry list of, of different aspects of the ordinance that the staff report recited were in compliance with the ordinance.
Okay. But Nick, on paragraph four, it doesn't include our 10-foot downtown sidewalk requirement, right?
No, I, I know. I'll, I agree with you. All I'm saying is that the only representation about the findings of fact with respect to full compliance with the ordinance is in paragraph four, and it does not mention, we're not misrepresenting the situation, we're not saying that it's, it's, it's complying with, say, the 10-foot sidewalk.
What I'm saying is that the motion that is before us, that has been seconded, says that the council finds that that is the case, that number four, among other things in the list. All right, so we're going to move forward with a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just with a short explanation, I'm, I'm all for the Art Center. I just really believe and have too often seen the 10-foot sidewalk land use ordinance ignored in large part because there's so many nonprofits in our downtown that we want to support them and expedite things. I think tonight, we could have requested and required this of the applicant without having to wait over the summer. And for that reason, I'm voting no, knowing that's going to pass anyway, anyways.
Thank you, Sammy. The matter passes six to one, with Sammy voting no. I do think, Mr. Manager, in, you know, some sympathy with what Sammy is saying, we need to figure out how to, we've addressed, this has come up before, a specific question about the land use ordinance requirement regarding sidewalks. And it is, I understand Sammy's frustration about that. We need to figure out a way past that, so that for future projects, and maybe even for this project with the help of the applicant, we get the 10-foot sidewalks in our downtown that we want. All right, the matter has passed six to one, and we will move on. Ken, thank you. Jeremy, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Marty, thank you. Congratulations to the Art Center.
Woo-hoo! Woo-hoo!
All right, and we're going to quickly move on, Mr. Manager, so if folks need to leave for, after this item, please go ahead and make your way out. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Next item is a public hearing. The public hearing on the town manager's recommended budget for FY '23. The purpose of the agenda item is to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the town manager's recommended budget for FY '23 as recommended by GS 159-12B.
Thank you, Richard. So council members, I just want to say, in kind of preparation for hearing from members of the public tonight, that, as the manager said, this is a public hearing about the budget that he recommended in his presentation a couple weeks ago. This is our opportunity to hear folks comment on that presentation and on any items they want to add to that budget or change about that budget. The council will have another, a final work session on the budget next week. And so we'll hear from public, members of the public tonight, but I just want council members to understand that we don't have to hash all that out tonight. We'll hear from folks tonight, the staff will have an opportunity to go back with what they've heard, and we'll come together in a work session of the council next week to address those questions and recommendations and tie up any other loose ends with the budget. So just an encouragement for us to hear from the public and then hopefully move along. All right, so I'm very happy to welcome folks for comment on the public, on the budget. I have a few folks signed up, and I'll, there may be some folks who walked in after the sign-up sheet disappeared, so I'll, I see some nods, so I'll be sure to say something or ask for who's, for people to come up. But first, let me call on Jay Miller, if he's still here. Hey, Jay. Come on up and introduce yourself, and as you know, we ask folks to keep their comments within about three minutes. And so I'm going to turn an annoying buzzer on on my phone, and hopefully we won't get there.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Jay Miller, 2115 Homestead. Also, I didn't mention this last time, the owner of 116 West Main in Carboro, commercial space. Well, last time I was here, a couple of weeks ago, thanked everyone. I want to do that again. You're helping so many nonprofits in the area. You know, we have groups working, as we do, on many issues. We work on food insecurity, affordable housing, race and equity, emergency assistance, and there are a lot of great groups that do this kind of work. We're one of them, and I hope you'll support all of them and all these efforts. This inter-local agreement that we're talking about is about a specific service, which is what most people call shelter work. So we're the only nonprofit in the area in Orange County that's providing this kind of work. It's very difficult work. It's 24/7, 365. And I think you know that. I just wanted to reiterate that the expense of it for us is about $1.4 million. The inter-local agreement is, that we're asking for $650,000, which would include partners in the area, including the County of Orange and Chapel Hill. And we're getting great support from the partners, and we're looking for support from Carboro as well. It was mentioned, the demographics of population, last time I was here, I think that number's about 15% in Orange County, so that we're asking you to look at that number as a port, a percentage of the total of $650,000. I broke it down last time. I can do that quickly again because I have time. We have a capacity of about 100, of exactly 116 people. Based on a service of 100 people and a cost of slightly less than $40 a day per person, which would give the person housing for that shelter, they would get case management services and two meals during a day. That does add up to a little over $1.4 million. It's $1.46 million at $40 a day, 100 people. Just some round numbers, easy math. I was doing calculations as I was sitting there in my head, and I think that that would amount to Carboro's investment of about, between $2 and $3 a day per person. Do you want me to tell you how I arrived at that? Well, you've got 100, if you had 100 people at, at 40.
Just as you're getting into the math, you've reached your three-minute limit.
We really, we really believe in this work, and we know that you do as well, and, and we hope you'll support us with that kind of investment. It's about $97,500. That number's at 15%.
Thank you so much.
No question.
No questions?
Go ahead, if you, yeah.
Just a really quick question, Jay. You had mentioned that you were getting considerable support from your partners. Can you go into detail on that, in terms of how much from, have the other partners committed to a certain dollar amount at this point?
The proposed budget in Chapel Hill, it hasn't been passed, is $258,000. The proposed budget from Orange County is $280,000, is the numbers that I've heard. Now, these are not, these are not passed. But they're in the process.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Barbara?
Ms. Miller, hello. And the numbers that you're giving, are they over that five-year period per municipality? Like you said, $97,500, is that over the five-year?
We're asking for five years. Are you asking about the other?
No, for Carboro, you said, did you say $97,500?
Well, if, based on the $650,000.
Yes.
15%, which is a population demographic that was mentioned the last time I was here. It was mentioned at 14, but I think it's changed slightly to 15. So, it's just, that's the percentage of the entire request.
Okay. So over the period of five years, however that's divided?
No, that's in the first year.
Not the first year?
Oh, I'm sorry. Your question.
That's 97,500 potentially annually. Okay, that's what I was asking.
Annually, I'm sorry, yes. We're looking, we're looking at, we know that you only do budgets year to year, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be the request for this coming fiscal year.
For this coming year. Thank you.
Jay, thank you very much. It's good to see you. Okay. So I think the other folks who are here to speak on the budget came in after the sign-up sheet, so I'm going to, you raise your hand if you're here to speak about the budget. I see Braxton, Jackie. Okay, great. Braxton, do you want to be next? Come on up. Welcome, Braxton.
Thank you for the opportunity. I rarely would like, don't like to speak, because my wife sits over there. And I don't want any shade thrown against her, period. When I heard about the amount that was in the budget for low-income housing, or housing at all, I thought it was laughable. Because this community has said over and over in a number of polls, that housing was one of their number-one items. And for to put 43 and some change in for housing, is a disgrace that it's down. And it hurts my feelings that that amount showed up. Thank you.
Thanks, Braxton. It's good to see you. Okay, Jackie, come on up.
Welcome. Good evening, everyone. I wasn't actually going to speak tonight, because I spoke last time, and I thought we were going to also speak next week. But hearing it's a work session, I just wanted to address a few things. First, just to acknowledge, this has been kind of an intense evening, and so I appreciate that people are sitting here, listening to my comment, and just taking a deep breath about that.
Thank you.
So, as you've heard, IFC, we are asking for an inter-local agreement with the towns in the county to support the only shelter in Orange County for men, women, children. We have been providing shelters since the beginning of time, the beginning of mass shelter, the mass homelessness, which was the beginning of the 80s, as people know, when public, funding for public housing went down and homelessness went up and never came back down, and it's only been increasing. In this community, it is only increasing with the price of housing. Every day, we are facing more and more people who are, who have grown up and lived here their whole lives, who are experiencing homelessness again and again, some for the first time, some again and again. And people are really trying to climb out of that hole, and it's getting even harder. And we sit with people every day, trying to figure out what their plan can be, when really, there's nothing here in Chapel Hill and Carboro. There's like zero units for people who are at 30% AMI and below. And I know that Barbara talked about this in the last meeting. Mr. Fushie, thank you for making that statement about housing. Housing needs to show up in this budget more, and emergency housing needs to show up in this budget more. As you heard from Jay, we have received commitments from Orange County and Chapel Hill to fund. The Orange County amount for shelter would be there, 41% of the population base, which I think is about 253,000. We also have funding being proposed in the county for food. We are not asking for an inter-local agreement for food, because we know we're not the only provider. So, there are a few things that I've heard that I wanted to just address. One is, if we do it for shelter, what about all the other nonprofits that are going to come flooding in, asking for an inter-local agreement? And our answer is, we are providing a service that no one else is providing, and that would otherwise need to be provided by government. Another question that's been asked is, why doesn't Orange County, why doesn't the county just bear the burden of shelter? Isn't that the county's job? We actually did, one of our board members, Tom Fenn, who's been here before you, did a mini-study for us of other similar towns in the United States, and found that the split was about 60% county and 40% towns, in terms of supporting shelters. So we don't believe it is solely a shelter, I mean solely a county burden. And what we know is that we will not achieve an inter-local agreement without Carboro coming on board, and you all are the ones that we're waiting for. And so, I don't know where I am with my time. I don't usually go this off the cuff, but I really did want to address those, those points, and also just let you know that we'll be here, we're going to be here when you come back from summer recess, talking more and more about housing and the need for folks who really feel very invisible right now. They feel very invisible. We encourage them to come and speak themselves, but it is really hard to enter a room like this when you are a person of color, when you are experiencing homelessness, when you are experiencing poverty, because these spaces are not set up for folks to feel comfortable. And so, I think we've seen that, we've seen that in this space, we've seen that in other spaces. And so I just want to say, we will be coming. I don't know how many of us, but we'll be here. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Jackie. I will just say that I love seeing IFC come here, so you're always welcome, as far as I'm concerned. Eli Sarr?
Yes. I just want to, just real quick, say thank you so much to folks at IFC for all the work that you're doing. Housing is something that is at the very top of my agenda. As someone who, last year, overnight, was homeless due to a tragedy, I had the privilege of having a wide network. I had the privilege of knowing so many people, but I also know how much other folks in our community don't have that privilege. So thank you so much for everything you're doing, and I just wanted to take a moment to celebrate your work, and I look forward to supporting in any way I can.
Thanks, Eli Sarr. So we, Danny, was that a hand raise?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
I don't know if I am within Robert's rules here, but in the interest of Chapel Hill and Orange County having signaled their commitment to the inter-local agreement, I would like to introduce a motion to have a resolution from this board to see the ILA reflected in our upcoming budget, some kind of signal to indicate that we intend to do this, which I would vote yes on. I'm happy to be checked on the parliamentary issues here, but I would like to introduce a motion that we will accept the full funding of the ILA agreement within the coming budget for the number that IFC is requesting.
All right. So just to clarify, you're talking about this upcoming budget, FY '23?
Yes. Basically, what I'm asking is to put a resolution on the floor tonight that asks this body to bind ourselves to honoring the ILA that IFC has asked us for in the budget in coming votes.
Okay. For the FY '23 budget?
FY '23.
Let me clarify. Okay. So there's a motion to signal to the manager that we are interested in including in the FY '23 budget, meeting this request for the coming year. And is there a second?
Yeah, right here.
Eli Sarr? Okay. All right. Mr. Manager, is that direction clear enough for you? The council is interested in seeing the Carboro share of the request for the FY '23 fiscal year reflected in the budget.
The 15% of $97,000.
Whatever that formula says.
$97,500 in the FY '23 budget, is I believe what is before us.
Randy?
Yeah, I guess my question is, next week is a work session. Is this, Danny, are you proposing that this is something that's part of the discussion of budget next Tuesday?
I am proposing that this be, no, I guess I am proposing that this be a standalone resolution, that we want to incorporate this into the budget, not that we will discuss this next week. I believe that, however I have the most power to reflect that we intend to do this, Chapel Hill and Orange County have already done it.
I think your motion reflects that. And I will just clarify, though, for the manager, I think one thing we will have to discuss next week, that the manager will need to come and talk with, through us, through with us, is how exactly we're going to pay that, for that, right?
Yes.
So there's a commitment to it, but there's also the manager's recommendations about our options for how to, how to meet that commitment. And that's what I think we need the work session for next week, in part, as well as some other items that I think the manager still has some questions about. Susan?
I have a couple of questions. One is, so my understanding is Hillsborough has not committing, I'm asking this question in terms of all of the partners, you know, putting in their fair share. My understanding is Hillsborough is not committing to this, and so what will be the plan to make up that lost revenue?
So the communication from Hillsborough has been that they are, they're waiting, they have not committed, but they are waiting to see what everyone else does, and then they will be discussing it. Because they have the smallest share, you know, we'll see what, what happens at that point. But we do believe, no one said this explicitly, but I do believe that there will not be an inter-local agreement if Chapel Hill, Carboro, and Orange County aren't all at the table. I don't know what will happen with Hillsborough, and we can go back and ask them. If you all are signaling support, then we will definitely be going back to them as well.
Did you consider also approaching the part of Meben that is in Orange County, in terms of being a part of the inter-local agreement?
I think we were looking at some of the other inter-local agreements that exist, and modeling this after, after that.
Okay. Final question, and maybe this is for the manager, or just in terms of clarification. I know that you are looking for a five-year commitment from the different jurisdictions. With this motion tonight, this is committing, committing us to the fiscal year '22-'23 budget, correct? We're not going any beyond that.
Well, we can't.
We can't, but also, we're not, in other words, you're, I noticed that in the memo you shared with us, you were looking for each of the jurisdictions to be committing to a five, to five years. I would rather not make that commitment, but I am fine making the commitment for the fiscal year '22-'23 budget.
I think that's going to have to be part of the conversation that we have with the manager next week, when we talk through what, first of all, what our options are for the '23 fiscal year, in terms of meeting this first year of the commitment, and then what our conversations are with our partners in Chapel Hill and the county, and hopefully Hillsborough, when we get to this larger conversation about the longer-term commitment in the five-year request. Because, you know, I think there are a number of options for us about how to do that, and it's not clear to me that the one that's on the table is necessarily the best one. So.
No, I don't, after Barbara speaks.
Barbara, go ahead.
I, at the heart of my service are people. I realize the space that we operate from is local government. But the most vulnerable in our community count on us, they count on us to move, and provide services like the services that IFC provides to our community. And so, I'm not hesitant. We are the town council, you know, we give direction to our town manager about what we want to do. Priorities are reflected in the budget. And this is where the rubber meets the road, right? So, all the lip service about caring about the most vulnerable in the community, you know, somebody dies at the shelter, unfortunately, and all the other things that go on, this is our opportunity as policymakers to make that difference, here in the budget. And, I mean, that's all I want to say. I don't have hesitation. I know this is a year-by-year process, but I feel like I would be very committed to it, year by year. We're helping the most vulnerable people in our community. And COVID has shown us a lot. And, you know, we have some work to do. And if we have money, which we do, you know, the budget can't be the same all the time. Sometimes things change, money has a shift, depending on what the need is in the community. So, I just wanted to share that. And thank you, Jackie.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
All right. There is a motion and a second motion moved by Danny, seconded by Eli Sarr, that we direct, we expressed to the manager the council's desire to see the $97,500 reflected in the FY '23 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Quick thing.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Hi, just wanted to touch on something that you mentioned, and I want to see if I can help out, you know, with, working with people of color, I know how difficult it is to get them to the table. If possible, would it be helpful for some of us to go and meet with folks somewhere? Is that something that you would welcome? Or is, I don't know, recording them and sending us video a possibility? I know that, I want to hear from folks, and I understand how difficult it is to stand on that podium. I did it myself a couple of times. And the first kind of, first time, I think I fumbled a lot more than I'm doing right now. So, if I can be of any support or show up, or in any way be of support, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you so much. We'll be in touch on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The matter passes unanimously. I have no one else speak up, signed up to speak on this item, or indicating they want to, so I think we might be ready to move on to the next item, Mr. Manager. Thanks to everyone for coming out and speaking. This is the most important decision the council makes every year, is the annual budget. So, everyone who comes to speak is doing an important service, so thank you. Mr. Manager?
Next item is continuation of a public hearing. It's a special-use permit A for new commercial building at 201 North Greensboro Street. And the purpose of this item is to continue the public hearing on the permit for the building at 201 North Greensboro Street. And Marty, who's going to, we'll introduce this topic.
Welcome back, Marty. And, Mr. Attorney, Nick, can I just ask you to, the difference between this item and the previous public hearing on the other permit is that this public hearing is still open. We haven't closed the hearing yet.
Yes, and just make sure that anybody who's new, that needs to be sworn in, would be.
Thank you. And the other clarification I want to offer is that we're hearing some additional information tonight, additional testimony from staff, perhaps from the applicant, perhaps from people speaking from the public. Just like with that other application, the staff, depending on where we go tonight, the staff will need some time to then pull together the written findings of fact and a potential decision by the council, depending on what direction we offer tonight. So, this is not a decision night. I just wanted to say it that way.
Thank you. Yes. Well, I will, as I did earlier, be very concise with my comments tonight, and then hand it back over to Jeremy Anderson, who was up here earlier. I had a little bit of a glitch today with my PowerPoint, so I converted this to a PDF. It's the same format we use, but just letting you know, it's a PDF. It looks a little different somehow. So, yes, as indicated, it's a continuation of the public hearing. It is still open. And here's the vicinity map again, in case there's anyone new in the audience tonight, right at the corner of West Weaver and North Greensboro Street. And I still have, just for a re- And I still have, just for reference, if we need to come back to it, the, the general information, acreage, bike parking, other parking, et cetera. And then I want to kind of move into the, to the new information, the new part of what we have. This is a little difficult to read on the screen, but it was included as attachment A in your agenda package, so you should have that for reference within your package. It's responses from the applicant to the comments, questions, concerns that were raised last time. And again, they're available to discuss that at more length. And then, I don't want to say too much ahead of Jeremy coming up here, but as far as I know, he's going to introduce to, to you a new revised site plan for your consideration, that in part, in, the most significant change is that it does involve a change to the location of the dumpster that was discussed last time. So, he'll have a representation of that in a couple of minutes here. If that does get legs here and move forward, in terms of where we seem to be going with this, that would involve a reduction of one additional parking space. They, they were able to do a redesign that resulted in a net loss of one additional parking space. With that in mind, yes, if we reach the point where council gives direction to staff to bring back a decision, we would need to, we as a staff would need to know that you were comfortable with there being forty parking spaces instead of forty-one, based on their parking justification statement. Also, the revised dumpster location, we have, we have sent that out to Towne Carrboro Public Works Solid Waste Staff and Orange County Recycling Staff. We have talked internally with our Public Works folks. We know they're okay with it, but we haven't received anything back from Orange County Solid Waste yet. No particular reason to, to think that that new location won't work, but what we're suggesting here in, in this item is that, again, if you give us direction to bring a decision back, that it include a condition that we get a final sign-off before construction plan approval about the new location for the dumpster. Bike parking was addressed in the applicant's response letter, and testimony, I do believe they're going to offer some testimony tonight regarding impacts associated with the project. And if there are any questions of staff, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, again, Jeremy, I know, wants to introduce some new information, and I'll be available for questions later if they come up.
Thanks, Marty.
Mr. Mayor, this is another matter that Councilmember Posada is qualified to sit on, having reviewed the April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two proceedings.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Elias R. Thanks for doing your homework. Okay, so we have a presentation from the applicant, is that right, Marty?
Yes, Jeremy Anderson.
Welcome again, Jeremy. You're busy tonight.
Jeremy Anderson, CJT, one eleven West Main Street, Durham.
And Jeremy, can you confirm you were sworn in last time?
I was sworn in last time, I can confirm. Congratulations, Councilman Posada, nice to see you up there. I'll go through a couple of slides and a couple of points, just to clarify some plan changes we made, and some of the responses to some of the kind of homework assignments we had from, from the council last time. Okay. I think I'm just going to use the rendering. Oh, no. There we go. Okay. I hope everyone remembers the plan, and some of the discussion we had last time. So, I'm just going to go through about five or six bullet points, and, and touch on the plan changes. What you see here is the plan we had last time, which, you know, you recall the building, the three-story building up here, the pervious paving, the parking lot, and then lots of discussion about kind of this parking lot, its, its dimensions, the location of the dumpster here. Those are kind of what the comments focused on, some of the bike parking. So, kind of running down my list of the changes we've made, I'm going to go to the next plan, which, I guess, give it a second, there we go. This is the revised rendered plan, and I can go back to the, the black and white if need be, but I think this, this will work for conversation. First, want to touch on the sidewalk width. I knew it was coming back up tonight, so, so here we go. We do have a ten-foot sidewalk all the way along the front, Weaver and Greensboro. We get across the driveway here, and then we were, we had made a, our letter indicated we wanted to keep the five-foot sidewalk that's there today, from the driveway to Center Street. Primary reason is because of the width of this parcel. And if we were to widen the sidewalk to ten feet, we would lose a, a significant piece of landscaping that we think is, is more important than potentially the sidewalk. Not that the sidewalk's not important to be wide, it is the same width all the way down Weaver Street, with the two-and-a-half-foot grass strip and the five-foot sidewalk. The reason we didn't go to ten feet is we would lose this two-and-a-half-foot landscape strip right here, that we find is important to meet one of the architectural findings to screen the parking. We have a fence in there, and a row of shrubs. This parking lot, we have narrowed to be as, as narrow as possible, with full parking on one side, a full drive aisle down the middle, and then compact spaces on this side. Even at this kind of reduced dimension, we are let, we have to widen the parking lot by two feet, towards the north, and that leaves us about three-and-a-half feet for the buffer. You know, three-and-a-half foot for that buffer, two-and-a-half foot for this planting strip is about absolute minimal to get some planting in there. So, a ten-foot sidewalk here would remove this landscape strip, and possibly some of this one. So, that's our rationale for leaving the, the five-foot sidewalk in place, along, along Weaver. There was a question, I think, Sammy, you brought up a parking, staff parking. To be honest, we just don't know yet. We don't have tenants, we don't know what the makeup of the commercial space, of the office space is. So, you're asking how many, how many staff parking spaces? We just, we do not have the information, to be honest, at this time. It could fluctuate, as you can imagine. The dumpster location. So, we presented last time that we thought that would cost us three parking spaces, and we had done a look before, and it was three parking spaces. We looked harder again, we moved some stuff around. We did move the dumpster from here, which was the concern, to internal to the site here. We were able to squeeze one more space in this way, or one or two more space, one space in this way, excuse me, and one space in this way. We did lose that little park space we had, and it was a little deck that was maybe for outdoor seating, outdoor office space. We did have to lose that to get that in there, but, you know, we think it's a worthwhile compromise. So, as Marty mentioned, we did lose one parking space, so we're down from forty-one to forty, but we think it's important that this, this dumpster change was, was made. So, want to highlight that. EV charging, the site plan does predate the requirement for it. We have not made a commitment to provide EV charging. We will provide conduit to a space on the site for, so that it can be easily added with a pedestal later, back to the panel. But, again, given our parking kind of flux between, do we have enough, do we not have enough, and, and not sure what the makeup of the tenant, tenant space will be yet. We'll commit to conduit, but we're not, we're not committing to putting in EV charging stations at this time. There was a question about tree canopy and maximizing it. I think we've, we've, we feel the tree canopy, at least along the street front, is, is adequate, is the proper spacing for street trees. It might be nice to have another one along the front here, but you can see, given the building placement, we just don't really have an opportunity to put another tree in there, and, and kind of preserve the, the architectural language and, and frontage along the street. We have, however, doubled the density of the plantings along this edge. So, again, concerns about the buffering and impact on those existing trees. We are pushing that parking, as I said, into the, into that area by two feet. We're going to do what we can to preserve as much of that existing vegetation as possible, but at this time, it's, it's hard to see what's really in there. So, when we, we will do what we can to minimize impact. If we can save the trees on our side, we will, but we are proposing double the amount of trees we had last time, to what you can see here. So, the additional, I think it's three or four trees along this buffer line, primarily for buffering, but it also, you know, adds to the canopy coverage for the parking lot. And then, lastly, bike parking. So, I think, Mayor Sells, you had a comment about the bike parking. We had it located over here, it's rather far from the front door. We did move that to this corner up here. So, this would be a covered structure in the corner where the, the three spaces, three racks, six spaces would be a lot closer to the front door, particularly for the office entrance here. We did add two more spaces, or keep two spaces here, so we have bumped our number up from fourteen or sixteen to twenty. We are at twenty bike parking spaces now. So, we've got three racks, three racks covered here with six spaces. And then, as we had last time, various bikes, racks scattered across the streetscape here. So, happy to increase that number from, from, I think, sixteen to twenty. With that, I think that kind of concludes the plan changes, and I will be here to answer any questions. I also want to introduce our appraiser, Tom Tully. He would, he has evidence to enter in. He'll also make up just a brief statement about the impact on adjacent property values, so.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do that, before we move on to other speakers. Welcome. If you would introduce yourself for the record, we'll also probably have to administer an oath to you, the clerk.
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the facts you are about to give are the truth to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do. My name is Tom Tully, J. Thomas Tully. On my license, I'm a state-certified general appraiser, and my office is located in Durham, and, as I've been doing this about twenty-five years. I took a look at the property at the behest of the applicant, to talk about the impact on the surrounding properties, the adjoining properties, and the general neighborhood, based on requirements from the council. So, basically, they're proposing the, the three-story building. I looked at the, the way everything is proposed, with what, the original dumpster plan was what I was given. I was not told about the moving of the dumpster until today. So, I did address that, but obviously, that's no longer an issue, or at least they've tried to ameliorate that issue. But what I basically found is that the proposed, the proposed improvement will not substantially injure the value of either adjoining property, that the proposed improvement will not substantially injure the value of any property within view of the subject, and the proposed improvement will not substantially injure the value of any property within the general neighborhood of the subject. The proposed improvement will not endanger the public safety or health in proximity to any of the involved parcels. The proposed improvement will be in harmony with other properties located in the general neighborhood of the subject, and that the proposed improvement will be in general conformity with the comprehensive plan, long-range transportation plan, or any other plans adopted, that have been adopted by the Carrboro Town Council. In actuality, the proposed improvement could potentially enhance the value of nearby properties due to its high-quality nature, and given the current vacancy of the property. And that's what I have, unless you have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tully.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, is that what the council needs, in terms of hearing evidence from an appraiser, a licensed appraiser, on the topic of property values and so forth?
Yeah, I think, I think his testimony is really geared toward his expertise, which is in the effect on property values, as opposed to talking about harmony and conformity with a land use plan, you know, and those kinds of matters.
Okay.
Did you do a, an appraisal?
No, I did not. I was not commissioned to do an appraisal, although I have appraised that property before, but not for this particular project.
Thank you, Mr. Tully.
Yes.
Susan.
Just one question, Mr. Tully. So, the, when you're looking at the, the impact of this development on surrounding property values, do you include what this will do in terms of increased traffic?
Yes, I looked at what they had proposed for, you know, increased traffic, but obviously, that's the data I have to work with. DOT won't provide me with that data. So, that comes a lot from just generally appraising in downtown Carrboro, which I've done a significant number of properties, including this property, over the years, and just basically the type of traffic that's there now, and that had been there when this was a bank, and then other iterations over the years for this property. As you're probably not talking about a significant increase in traffic by this development, as opposed to previous developments. Obviously, now, there's nothing there, so there would be an increase over nothing, but then, you know, I don't think it would be in the towns' or the neighbors' best interest to continue to have this be a vacant lot.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Thanks for being here. Jeremy, is there another part of your present, your staff, your team's presentation?
No, that is it. We are here for questions.
I think we have some other folks signed up to speak, although it's possible that council members have questions for the applicant now. Do you want to wait, or do that now?
Happy to wait.
Okay. I have a few folks signed up to speak, and then, of course, there are some others who may have come in after the signup sheet went missing. I'll just go and order the way that you're signed up in. Jim Haley, are you here? Come on up, sir.
Mr. Mayor, we have a sort of a blind presentation. Do you want us to do that all at once, or do you want?
You can go, you're welcome to go in the order you wish to go in. We do ask that in each individual speaker, try to keep their comments within about three minutes or so. And so, I will be kind of timing that roughly, but I'm not going to be a totalitarian about it.
I apologize. I'm the attorney with it, so I'll just give a brief introduction.
Okay, yeah, come on up and introduce yourself, and you'll need to be, you'll need to be sworn by the clerk. And if you haven't already taken the oath, you'll need to do that tonight. So, might as well do it at the same time.
We can do all three at the same time.
Thank you very much.
You'll all three, your answer. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the facts you are about to give are the truth to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Be sure to introduce yourself, so we have your name for the record, and then we'll go from there.
Absolutely. My name's Nathaniel Parker, Stan Law Firm, five-ten West Williams Street, Apex, North Carolina. And I was asked by Mr. Haley just to come and facilitate, because he was invited last time, to bring some experts to talk about his concern about the dumpster. I just preliminarily acknowledge that the new plan does seem to show the dumpster being moved to a place that is much, we're much more amenable to, but there's been a lot of movement with this. So, I want to go ahead and just present our concerns here, so that you have that before you, as you think about this moving forward. So, without any more ado, I'm going to go ahead and ask Rich Kirkland to come in. He is an appraiser, so he's going to speak to his analysis about impacts of the property.
Good evening. Three minutes, you say? All right. I'm a state-certified general appraiser. I've been appraising the triangle for over twenty-five years. I'm also an MAI through the Appraisal Institute. I do impact analysis regularly. I present before boards like this on a wide range of different uses, from schools to rock quarries to wastewater treatment plants. I was asked to look at this, primarily because I know Jim through some other avenues, but he asked me to look at this, and specifically looking at the dumpster issues. We did look at the dumpster, and the dumpster being fifteen feet from a house, and also being adjacent to the driveway. The, the first thing we did was looked at what is the highest and best use of Mr. Haley's property over there. We went through analysis because of the zoning on it, it's got a conditional use for business use. We looked through that. The four criteria for a highest best-use analysis is looking at what's legally permissible, what is physically possible, financially feasible, and maximally productive. We go through that analysis, it was interesting. I didn't expect this, but I've come across this a couple of times recently in these areas, where we actually found a single-family residential use was actually a higher value for this property than for a commercial use. So, looking at this as a residential use, the dumpster being fifteen feet from the house, we did, I, I say "we" because I work with my son, but we looked at this and found that, we thought that was too close. We looked around Carrboro, looked around Chapel Hill. Most of the dumpsters we could find that are in close proximity to residence uses, where you have residential meeting commercial, is around twenty-seven to thirty feet, and most of those uses where I measured that were multifamily uses, not single families. So, I would expect a distance greater than that.
Kirkland, I'm going to ask you to pause, just very briefly, for my own clarification here. You're talking about the property, the, not the, the subject property.
No, I'm talking about the adjoining property being negatively impacted by that.
Property that is zoned B two CZ, or whatever it is, and currently has a number of specific uses allowed on it, but you're not talking about the subject property, highest best use and all that?
I apologize, fellas, it's confusing. I'm trying to move quickly, I apologize.
Please, just want to.
But yes, I am talking about the impact to, of the adjoining property to the north. So, again, we, we just saw that as an issue. With it being moved, again, it's, the new plan is a much better location for that, so I don't have any specific comments about that, but I'd be happy to go into greater detail or discuss that. We did look at market data, looked at actual sales transactions through the area for this analysis.
So, basically, your testimony is, you did some analysis of the So, basically, your testimony is you did some analysis of the impacts of this subject property on the adjoining property, specifically considering the previously proposed location of the dumpster.
Correct.
And now that the dumpster has been moved, is it your testimony that that's much better?
I believe that it has a better location for the dumpster than where it was before, and I guess they asked me to go ahead and speak, just in case there was concern about it being moved back for some reason.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And if it's helpful, I've got copies of that report here. We can see what.
May I clarify? So, in the absence, I mean, given that the dumpster has been moved, is it your testimony that there is not an adverse, a substantial adverse impact on neighboring property values?
I haven't really measured, to look at the distances. I'm saying I don't have, I don't have any comments based on this new plan. So, I'm not saying that there's no impact. I'm saying I don't have an opinion at this point.
You're only addressing the situation where the dumpster was at its position before?
Correct.
Okay. That's what your testimony is related to?
Exactly. Yes, I'm here in case things cautionary move back to where they were.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify. I think, I think the mayor did so also.
And Mr. Kirkland, did you do a comparative sales analysis to determine the highest and best use of the, of 102 Center Street?
I did. We went through the full highest best use analysis. We looked at sales of residential properties similar to this property that adjoins the application. It was based on using it for a commercial use or residential use, and we actually came up with a value based on residential.
That was in the Carrboro market, correct?
In the Carrboro market. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Who's next?
And we have a presentation.
Yes, it's, sorry, Jim Haley, 102 Center Street, Carrboro, North Carolina. I'll be very brief. The applicant has changed their application. Everything that we prepared tonight was for the previous, the project as proposed previously. So, I'll, I'll get through this very quickly, just in respect of everyone's time. So, as the property owners to the north of this project, you know, we have some concerns. You know, one is, you know, we want the dumpster to be at least forty-five feet away from our structure. That's addressed with the new plan. The previous plan, it was only fifteen feet away. So, we feel like that's addressed. You know, it's time of day restrictions for emptying the dumpster. We don't want the dumpster emptied in the middle of the night when people are trying to sleep in the neighborhood. Not sure how that's going to be regulated, but if that could be considered as a condition, I think that needs to be addressed. You know, what's appropriate? There are houses all around there. That's something I think that we need to talk about. We have a private sewer line that's along the south part of the property. It's right along the property line. If the trees are removed in that area, that could be disturbed, and we could be without sewer service. And as an owner, if that happens in the middle of a construction project, you know, we don't have any recourse. And so, so how, you know, what do we do? Do we just, do we call the construction company? Do we call the developer? So, I'd like for there to be, you know, something in place to protect us if that happens in the middle of the, of the construction project. Second thing is, we had a tree survey done on the property. There's trees that are on the applicant's side. There are trees that are on our side. We want to preserve the trees that are on our side. Can you go to the next slide? Or is it? Where's the? So, I've got a couple of pictures. Again, I want to go very quickly. It's, you know, it's nine forty, so let's, I'll go through this pretty quickly. Got two photos I want to show. One is right at the property line, and the other one is from across the street. Right at the property line, you can see there's an existing vegetated buffer there. There are trees that are on our side. There's, you know, old oak trees. There's trees that have been there probably for eighty years, old crape myrtles. You know, there's an existing buffer there. We want to retain as much of that as we can. That provides a nice screen between the intense, you know, three-story downtown use as compared to the residential use to the north. Going to the second photo from across the street, you can see, you know, there's a vegetated buffer there, a screening buffer, thirty or forty feet tall. You know, that, on the applicant's plan, that's showing that it's not there at all, but there is a buffer there. And so, you know, we want to make sure the trees on our property are preserved to the greatest extent possible. And again, I've got a tree survey to my licensed land surveyor that shows where the trees fall exactly on the property line. So, again, this speaks to the original location. This has changed now. So, so the applicant's new plan does address this. The dumpster is forty-five feet away from our structure, which is great. Again, I think if that condition can stay in there, depending on what decision is made or not made tonight. Again, restrictions on hours, so we're not impacted or not, you know, people aren't woken up in the middle of the night when the dumpster is emptied. And again, the sewer line, sewer line runs right across the southern property boundary. There's trees, you know, growing through there. If those trees get removed, it could disrupt, it could, you know, completely destroy the sewer line, and then our home would be without any sewer service. So, there's that, and then, you know, if any trees located on our property are removed or damaged as part of the, the project, you know, the last thing that I want is to walk out there one day and see no trees and say, oh, well, we accidentally took all the trees down along the property line. To me, that's totally unacceptable. You know, we surveyed the trees. We know where they are. We know which ones are on our side of the property. We don't want them disturbed during construction. And so, if they are, they're going to be replaced with like species and like caliber. And with that, I go back to our conditions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any other testimony y'all wish to offer before we get into questions or other comments from the public?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask Mr. Tully a quick question on, I hate to use the word cross-examination, but I think that's what it is.
Sure. Okay. Sure. So, why don't we let these gentlemen sit back down, and Mr. Tully, question from?
And we have some copies of the presentation that Mr. Haley.
Thank you. Do you make sure to, make sure that the clerk gets at least one of those?
Make sure one for the clerk. My copy. Nope, it's the second one.
And Jim, you gave one to the clerk, is that right? Your event.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Tully? I think, I think that would be ideal. And I just had one, one question for clarification.
Go ahead. Yes. Be sure to speak into the microphone if you would. Thanks.
When you said that you did not believe that there would be any impacts to property value for the property, were you speaking of the plan that's been shown today?
No, I was speaking with the, with the dumpster as it was originally.
So, your opinion is that there's no damage or impact on the property with the dumpster and the location at the corner of Center Street and 102 Center Street?
No, much because of the buffer that the homeowner has actually introduced himself that was already there.
Okay. So, what analysis did you do that there would be no impact to property?
I also looked at highest and best use, and I respectfully disagreed that the highest and best use of the property at 102 would be anything residential.
Okay. And what was, what comparative sales did you use to reach that conclusion?
I did not use comparative sales on that property.
So, you did no comparative sales analysis to determine your highest and best use for 102 Center Street? Is that correct?
I did not.
Okay. And what?
But may I elaborate?
Please do.
I would respectfully disagree that the highest and best use of that property would be anything residential, given the commercial zoning. The highest and best use of that property would be to scrape that house and develop it commercially.
So, is highest and best use going to be based on the square-footage value that you can yield, that can be yielded from a property?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. And so, that's based on comparative sales? Is that correct?
It would be.
So, if Mr. Kirkland has done a comparative sales analysis that shows that single-family residential yields a higher square-footage value, would that not necessarily mean that that is the highest and best use?
It could be. Did he also look at what commercial sales would be if that property was developed commercially?
And so, if he did that, and residential was more, then residential would be the highest and best use, correct?
That would be, but I'd have to see that.
It's in his report. One last question, and that is, what obsolescence did you look at from the dumpster?
None. I don't believe there is any.
So, did you consider odor?
Yes, if it is their buffer there.
So, it's your opinion that a tree buffer would eliminate any odors from a dumpster fifteen feet from a house?
Yes, also, given that at this point, there's no planned restaurant in the space that would cause those types of odors.
That isn't allowable use, though, is it not?
I believe that it is, yes.
Okay. So, it could be. Okay. And then, visually speaking, the dumpster is how tall? The dumpster enclosure is how tall?
It was going to cover, the dumpster was mine, was what I was told.
Okay. And it was a fully opaque brick structure? Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's what it was.
Okay. And did you believe that that would have any visual impairment as a negative obsolescence?
No.
So, even though it's fifteen feet away from the property, the structure?
Fifteen feet away with a tree buffer between them.
Okay. But you did not consider the highest and best use, nor did you?
Not of, not of the neighboring property, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Tully.
Thanks, Mr. Tully. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Are there other people here to speak on this item? Not seeing any hands. So, we've heard some additional testimony tonight. I guess we open it up for some questions from council members, presumably from staff.
Are you closing the adversary portion of the hearing?
I guess if no one else is prepared to offer testimony.
Actually, that's premature, because what if you have questions of someone?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, council members, questions for staff, or for the applicant, or for any of the, I guess, any of the people who offered testimony? Is that right? Nick? Barbara? And then Sammy? And then Danny? And then Susan?
Thank you, Mayor. And so, I'm sitting here witness, witnessing what I, what I just witnessed. I think I, I did understand what was going on, but was wanting to ask, where is the, oh, the attorney?
Yes.
Right. And so, you're, thank you for coming. So, your line of questioning with Mr. Tully, with Mr. Tully? And so, you were trying to get at, you know, just for transparency and understanding, it was quite a, I mean, you know what I mean, like usually in the courtroom, you know what I'm saying?
We don't often get the cross-examination.
Right, yeah.
And I do apologize. It's the messy part of quasi-judicial hearings. You are judges, just without the robes, so my apologies for that. It's developing, but please, can I answer your question?
We're working on the robes. Go ahead, Barbara.
Oh, that'd be cool.
Yeah, and just trying to understand what you were trying to get at as far as like the appraisal and the adjoining properties and things like that.
Absolutely. Thank you for asking the question. And really, we are, we have no problem with the dumpster being moved. My concern is that Mr. Tully's analysis seemed to suggest that it'd be okay, the dumpster either placed. And so, I was asking the questions about whether or not he had just reached conclusions, which is not competent evidence for you, or whether or not he had done an analysis that is an expert analysis. And so, if you had to pick, because I think you're going to have his opinion and Mr. Kirkland's opinion, Mr. Kirkland has done a comparative sales analysis for both commercial and residential properties, and he found out what has the highest per-square-foot value, and found that it was residential. And my point with Mr. Tully is, he has not done that. He just assumed that commercial would be the highest and best use, and that assumption in this market turns out to be false, and you can see that in Mr. Kirkland's analysis, which is in the record. So, that was the, the point of the question there. Hopefully, it's moot, but being that his testimony was that it, there's no impact, even with the dumpster in the corner, I felt like I needed to, to sort out for you which of the opinions to value more.
And Barbara, thank you for asking him the clarification. I want to offer once again the clarification that when you talk about the analysis that your witness offered in terms of highest use of, best, as best use of the property, you're talking about the property on Center Street, not the subject property that is impact, presumably would impact.
That's exactly right. That's right. Because, as you guys, and this is not an expert thing, this is just common sense, you're going to care if it's your house far more if the dumpster's being emptied at five in the morning than if it's your office building that you're not at, or that a, a commercial use, right? So, this, in this case, it is residential, is the highest best use. So, the smell that's there all the time, the fact that you got a dumpster enclosure right at the corner of your house, the fact that they're dumping the dumpster out, all those things are of greater impact, and that, those are the impacts that Mr. Kirkland was talking about, and he identifies in his report. You got appearance, you got odor, I mean, it's a dumpster. It's trash, and, you know, a restaurant use is possible here, and we're not saying, don't put it anywhere. We appreciate that it's being moved. We just want to make sure it stays moved.
Yeah. I also appreciate the clarification that your cross-examination was based on the idea that the dumpster would stay in the original location. It has, in fact, been proposed to be moved to a more acceptable location.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry I didn't introduce that. That was why my first question with him was.
Important to do, but I just want to make sure we know where we all stand on what the applicant is now proposing as a change to the site plan.
Thank you for the dialogue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Barbara, you good? Thanks. Sammy, you're next, then Danny, then Susan.
Yeah, that was, that was, I'm very grateful. I've served on this council for a long time and never actually seen that kind of cross-examination during a quasi-judicial. It was pretty interesting. But it sounds like it's not so relevant, given that the dumpster has been moved, and we just want to make sure, as a council, that that is one of the conditions per this very helpful list that you guys have provided. One of the things I'm interested in is the little green strip between the road and the sidewalk. So, there's two ways. Well, firstly, the land use ordinance, again, asks for a ten-foot sidewalk. So, what I'm interested in is having the extend, the sidewalk extended over that little green strip, and that sort of represents seven and a half feet. I appreciate the trees and that other strip, and, and then I don't want to further encroach into the neighbor's root system. So, I think from, from my perspective, two and a half feet from that little green strip would, would get us closer to the ten feet, and given all the constraints, it doesn't make sense to encroach on all those other spaces. So, I would like for that to be included, along with all the other conditions that the neighbor has, has shared with us, and a similar findings that can be brought to us at our next meeting when we revisit this. I'd like to make a motion that this be included, and the two and a half feet of the little green strip between the sidewalk and the road.
Thank you, Sammy. So, Sammy has made a motion that we, when staff goes back to develop the findings of fact, that they include information about a sidewalk being extended into that green strip near the street side of the proposed sidewalk, as well as the four conditions proposed by Mr. Haley and his team, or maybe I should say, Mr. Kirkland and his, Mr. Parker and his team. So, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I need to know if there's a second, or if we wanted to continue discussing first. Second, but I want to ask for a friendly addition.
Let me just accept a second for now, and then we'll continue discussing. I suspect there will be some modifications. I see someone with a hand raised. Is that Ed? Come on up, Ed. Just to clarify, Ed, we're having a conversation up here now about where we want to go with this.
Sorry, I didn't want you to vote on that.
Go ahead.
Apologize. I just want to talk about these four proposed conditions, one by one. Number one, that, that's going to be reflected on a drawing, so that is a revised drawing. That, that doesn't need to be a condition. In terms of emptying the dumpster restricted to certain hours, I'd, I'd like to look at In terms of emptying the dumpster restricted to certain hours, I'd, I'd like to look at specific commercial dumpster restrictions in neighborhood areas. I, I think that, that looks like a very reasonable request. May have to tweak the hours slightly. I'm, I'm not sure if it's like 7:30 kind of thing, but if I could get back to you on that, but that looks very reasonable. In terms of the private sewer line, we, we don't know where it is. We don't know if it comes over to our property. We have had conversations with Mr. Hallie and basically said, if you want to locate that sewer line and tell us where it is, we will happily agree to not damage it and coordinate with you. You know, we, we can't damage what we don't know isn't there or is there kind of thing. That, that's a little bit of a difficult one. There is no sewer easement there, which makes it all the more difficult. We, we, we don't know what it is. We don't know where it is. If we can be given an idea of what it is and where it is, we will happily work there, but at the moment, it's just a, we think this is here, we hope this is here, please don't touch it, and it, it's just very ambiguous. If any trees are located on 102 Center Street property are removed, if, if we come on to someone else's property and start damaging someone else's property, absolutely, we will have to put someone else's property back. I think that's a fundamental absolute.
Thanks, Ed. I think you've actually gotten to some questions that were probably going to come up, so I appreciate you.
I did not want you both.
I appreciate that. No, I think that's, that's good. I think we'll be honing in on some of those exact points here in this conversation, so I appreciate you focusing in on that. Okay, staff, Marty, I'm glad you're appearing, because I, I was summoning you in my mind. I do feel like, well, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, if, I just, if I may interject, it's been a long, busy day, and I'm realizing the, the conversation about whether the sidewalk would be widened has alerted me that we would seek direction from you if we're given, you know, orders to come up with a decision tonight, to, if you move forward and vote on the matter of widening the sidewalk, make that in the context of a finding that the alternative architectural standards are found to be acceptable. I did not manage to get that in my presentation. The Appearance Commission has not have been able to make quorum for three straight meetings over the course of approximately two months, so they've not officially reviewed it, but the town attorney and I reviewed the ordinance language in fine detail and, and came up with a determination that should you choose, if you're ready to vote on this project, you ultimately are the deciding authority related to that. So we don't necessarily have to delay, but I, I wanted to say that. I forgot to make it a part of my presentation.
Marty, can I ask you a question about your first comment? You would want it to be one of the findings of fact, should we direct you in this way about the sidewalk?
Yes.
That the, that the alternative architectural standards would be acceptable. What is, we'd want to specify, though, what we mean by that.
Jeremy very briefly referenced that one of the standards is that you shield the parking, and that one of the reasons they would not want to widen the sidewalk is that that enables the shielding. So if direction is given from council to widen the sidewalk, it would have to be in the context of saying it's okay to not shield the park.
So I was afraid that's what you meant. I want to clarify what I believe Sammy was proposing, which is not that, that we are asking the applicant to consider anything on the internal, north side of the sidewalk. That part of the plan is fine.
Okay.
The green strip on the, between the sidewalk and the roadway.
Yes.
Curb.
What, what, I, I can pull it up if you'd like, but I'll try, I'll try to succinctly paraphrase what the ordinance calls for. That is shielding between a parking lot and the street. The shielding from a neighboring, you know, commercial or residential property is in a different part of the ordinance. The architectural standards call for shielding between the parking lot and the street.
I'm doing a bad job of explaining.
Or I'm doing a bad job of hearing.
We're talking entirely about the sidewalk portion of the site plan.
Okay.
Right now, as you know, on the sidewalk on Weaver Street, there's this, there's Weaver Street, there's the curb, then there's a strip of dirt and grass, often just dirt, a five-foot sidewalk, and then proposed to be a planting section or whatever. Sammy's talking about widening the sidewalk into the existing little green dirty patch that's between the sidewalk and the street.
I'm connecting, my mind finally connected the dots, that you're not saying, you're not taking away a planting area. You're just, yes.
The screening is important and meets the architectural standards.
Is that what a verge is?
Verge, yes.
Is that?
I'm not sure.
That green strip, I saw the word verge. Is that, the green strip is a verge?
Sammy's proposal is that.
So we're talking about the verge?
Yes. We're, we're on the verge of something great here. Sammy's proposal is to widen the sidewalk. At the expense of the two and a half foot verge, or whatever that technical term is for that, so that we would then have, as Sammy proposed, about, about seven and a half foot wide sidewalk along Weaver Street.
Okay, great.
Everyone understands, and I saw some thumbs up, nodding heads.
Marty, is that context thing still relevant, given this clarification?
We still need direction from council, should you choose to say that the architectural standards, the alternative version of architectural standards is acceptable, yes.
Okay, and to.
Sorry, let me just talk to Sammy. Why, how is that an alternative to the architectural standards if we're still retaining, if the plan would still retain the screening, planting area?
There was, Jeremy, if you can help me out, there was at least one other matter within the architectural standards that.
Or it's because it's not the full 10 feet.
And, and it's not full screening, but I think it's probably glazing. It is usually glazing.
I'm not sure, Marty, there was another standard we weren't meeting, but I believe the requirement is it's screened by a building, and we're screening it by.
By habitable space.
Right. So we're screening it by landscaping and a fence.
Yes.
A time when the planning board is now rushing all back to me here. Yeah, that's right.
Habitable space is the key phrase. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Marty. Did you need to make a follow-up question with Marty?
Marty, on the neighbor's conditions, it was pointed out that item one, that the drawing covers that point, and that, so we wouldn't need to make it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sammy. So next I have, we're going to come to you, Randy, after these other folks. Let me add you to my list. Danny, you're next.
Yes, my questions, I suppose, are for the applicant's attorney, probably.
The applicant's attorney, or for the?
Well, no, I'm sorry, for 102 Center, the attorney presenting.
Jim Hawley.
Yes, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Mr. Parker.
Mr. Parker, yes.
Yes.
So very first, certainly because I missed it, where is the report entered into the record, email?
You're talking about the appraisers' report?
Yes.
I only delivered one copy there and one to the clerk, and I'll be honest, I didn't want you guys to just get lost in that, so it is in the record. I apologize for that. It's, it's hard, right? You have a stack of paper not to.
Highest and best use.
Yes.
Is the property at 102 Center currently residential?
It's being used as a hair salon, so the zoning is B2 conditional, but it is to go to residential, it just involves a, I understand, an administrative zoning permit.
Is there a lease with that tenant?
There, there could be. The, the point with the highest and best use is not necessarily what it's currently being used.
No, I, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, it could be leased. The question is, is it presently under lease? No, it is not.
What is the timeline for which the property owner might pursue the highest and best use through which Mr. Tully was just cross-examined?
So the business owner could lease that. I mean, it is completely structured internally still as a residential home, so it could be turned around into being rental property right away.
Does the owner intend to bring it residential, as far as you know?
They're looking at right now what is going to be the best thing to do within this market, just like everybody else.
I guess I'd be curious to review that report. It frankly beggars belief that a residential use would be higher than a comparable commercial use that it is similarly zoned for. But I do, I just basically want to note that given that the 45-foot structure meets these requirements, we have sort of watched a fairly contentious process that is mostly addressed before we watched it. And I just want to enter into the public record that most of these concerns have been addressed after a very lengthy and very neighborhood positive, as we understand it as a council, public process for a property that is not currently being used for the highest and best use for which its owner is advocating. Is that pretty much right?
This has been a productive process. Absolutely, I agree with you, and, and we're very pleased that the dumpster's been moved. Really, the only concern, and, and I hate that we had to use your time, because we did reach out to the applicant weeks ago about moving the dumpster, and we first heard a positive feedback about that on Friday, that it would be moved, and then we heard back later in the day that it was being returned to the original location. And so even though today we, we learned that it probably be moved to this middle point, I hope you can understand our felt need to cover our bases and make sure we addressed the possibility that it be moved back to the corner. So I, I'm very appreciative of your time and the hour, but we did need to put that information in, and, and I think that we do have, and just to answer your question, it's, it's on pages two and. I'm not going to tell you what the per square foot is. It's in there. If it begs the point, but I think everyone knows what's been happening in the residential real estate market faster than commercial, and so that's why this phenomenon is going on, but you have to do the analysis to know it, and that's, that's what Mr. Kirkland did. Did you have any other questions for me, Mr. Counsel?
No, I appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Thank you, Danny. We'll go next to Susan, and then Randy. And let's, let's do, remind ourselves of the hour as we continue this.
I had a couple of questions for Marty. Marty, first of all, I assume that there will be a good bit of time where sidewalks will be inaccessible to pedestrians. So my question is there, is there anything in the L U O that sort of spells out what kind of accommodations will be made during that period where construction's going on and the sidewalk is, is inaccessible?
Sure, the, the L U O language, or perhaps I should say mechanism, is what's called a construction management plan, which typically happens after and only if the project is approved. We move into what's called the construction plan stage, and the town staff does not put an approve for construction stamp on a set of plans until, you know, all the fine-tuned details are in place. And in that part of the development process, the, the applicant has to hold an additional neighborhood information meeting where they basically announce to everyone, look, we're getting ready to really, really build this thing, let's all come together and talk about the, how we can mitigate impacts associated with construction among those, any potential sidewalk closures. So I don't know if the applicant is prepared to speak tonight to what extent sidewalk closures may be needed, but procedurally, we would, we would address that with then the construction management plan, which ultimately the manager signs off on once we're comfortable with what it says.
So Jeremy, you're shaking your head. Does that mean you're not concerned about the impact this will have on the sidewalk?
I wouldn't say I'm not concerned about it. It definitely will have an impact, but it's a part of construction, and I think Marty outlined it well. We'll have to put a plan together. It will involve some closures, maybe some, you know, longer than others, but. And some temporary crossings and a detour plan that shows how pedestrians can get around, but it's just kind of the nature of construction, and I'm not worried. We'll, we'll figure out something. I mean, we can't figure out how to build a building without figuring that out.
Do you have a really rough sense of how long this construction would take?
I would say eight to 12, I would say 12 months, typical construction period, and I don't see it being extended beyond that.
Okay.
And I, and I don't think it's closure necessary the whole way either. I mean, it's, you know, some of it can probably open earlier, but it's a small site, tight site, and I think I'm going to realize that, so.
Okay, thank you, and Marty, one more question. Couple, I guess it was two weeks ago when we were talking about this, there were a few community members that were very concerned about the increased traffic on Center, on Center Street. And it was suggested, I think in one of the emails, about even putting up planters at, at Short Street, so that you could continue to have the pedestrians and the bicyclists having access to Center Street, but delivery trucks and what have you would not have access. I'm curious if this is even a possibility, and I'm also curious about other traffic calming measures that are being considered for those neighbors on Center Street that could get a lot of activity going on here. Yes?
Before Marty answers, I do want to make sure I check with the attorney to ensure that. Questions along this line are relevant to the decision before the council. In other words, relevant to whether, I mean, not to say it's not important, Susan, but, because I know we did talk about the potential for neighbors initiating a traffic calming request and so on, but I want to make sure we're staying in our lane, so to speak.
I think you just said it. No, I, I think that Susan is talking about a broader issue, actually, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really talking about all of the neighbors on Center Street, Short Street, that could see a pretty dramatic change in terms of the amount of traffic coming by, so is that what you mean by broader context?
Yeah, I mean, in other words, I think that what the mayor is raising is the question of whether what you're asking about is something that ought to be dealt with on a broader policy basis, as opposed to some kind of condition attached to this particular special use permit application.
Yeah, I would just, I guess, add to what Nick is suggesting that, just as a suggestion, that, that you might give us direction, give direction to staff to look at that as a broader policy issue, rather than specifically tying it to a, you know, a condition on this permit that says something will be done to Short or Center Street. The good news, so to speak, is that, you know, those are both town streets. DOT is not involved, so if we're given direction as a staff to analyze that, we could bring back some suggestions. Tina Moon did mention to me today, I've forgotten the name, but that we have received a traffic calming request from someone, I believe it was on Center Street, so that's at least in her, you know, applications right now, so.
Yeah, that's really helpful, and I think that's the way to go with this. The only thing I would say is I would hope that those suggestions would come back to council before the completion of the project, so that we can get moving on that.
Okay.
And people won't be so impacted.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. I'm sorry to interrupt your question. Randy, you're next.
I just wanted to ask a little bit more about number three from the, of the neighbor, about the private sewer line along the South property. You know, it's not only the development, but I also think that the tree plantings that could be on the, the screening near the sidewalk, when those are implanted. So I guess what I, I want to know is what insurance would not only this particular homeowner at 102 have, but any of the other connecting sewer lines, because I know how easily they get damaged.
Is that for Marty?
You know.
I'll answer it quickly. As Ed already touched on, we, we would request that, that, that property owner have their sewer line, their service surveyed accurately. You can do that with some tracing, you know, and accurately locate it. That way, when our construction begins, whether it's removing a tree, removing some pavement, we know where it is, we can stay away from it, or we can be very careful with the contractor, so. But we don't know exactly where it is, so it's, you know, if it crosses our property line, there's a different issue there, that, you know, there, there's something that they need to maybe fix on their side versus if that sewer line's on their property. As Ed said, we, we can't damage, you know, something on someone else's property, and we at least know where it is, and we can work to stay away from it, be careful. I don't know about other sewer lines in Center Street, but that's just the service. Their service apparently comes out of the building, comes very close to the property line, and we just, they want us to make sure we're taking care around it.
I would just add to that, you know, but it is a typical part of the process to do before construction plan authorization is granted, to do utility locates and, and, you know, make sure we all know where things are. That's not a perfect process, you know, I have to acknowledge that. The Seaton property on the north end, on the north side of the development site comes to mind as, you know, I'm not suggesting there's going to be an issue there, but other than that, it's really just the two streets, you know, that would be impacted. And so there, there are older parts of town, there are some sewer lines that, as we're discussing tonight, we don't necessarily know exactly where they are, so, but we do our best to do the utility locates and know where everything is before, before they stick a shovel in the ground.
Right, yeah. Well, I certainly don't want the, the neighbors on Center Street to be, you know, surprised and without service. Thanks.
Marty, to follow up on that, in the context of any project like this where there's a conditional use permit being, or a special use permit being contemplated. Presumably there is, there are statutes and so forth in place to deal with situations where one property owner damages another, something on another property owner's property, related to construction or whatever, that are dealt with in that space rather than in the conditional use permit itself. In other words, conditions on the permit, do you know what I mean? Am I making any sense?
May I answer that?
Yes, I was, I was going to say.
I do not believe that it's appropriate that this council can establish as a condition some kind of remedy in the event that during the construction process, there is a trespass or an act of negligence that causes damage to a third person. As you're suggesting, Mr. Mayor, if that were to happen, there is, there are remedies that the law has that allows the injured person to bring a claim against, say, the construction company that damaged their property. And there are different remedies that the law provides for that kind of damage, but this council cannot, as any kind of condition of a special use permit, interfere in that particular kind of, or try to deal with. interfere in that particular kind of, or try to deal with some kind of hypothetical problem and establish some kind of remedy, like fix my trees or fix the sewer line.
And would it be correct, Nick, to say that even ahead of any potential need for legal remedy, there are also steps in this process around the construction management plan, the construction plan itself, that identifies utilities, does kind of the things that Marty was describing to help prevent anything like that from happening in the first place, right? But again, is not something that would be built in through condition on the permit. It would be, that is simply part of the process as it's laid out in the land use ordinance.
Yes, and I, you know, Nick, I don't mean, I'm not in any way trying to counter what you're saying. I'm, I'm just offering that, you know, what we have on screen are requests from a neighbor to put these in as conditions. And if the applicant is willing, we have done something along these lines for other situations in the past, just to acknowledge that that was requested and the applicant was okay with that. And I know Ed testified, you know, 10 minutes ago to that effect. So, you know, if there is, I'm trying, what I'm trying to get at, Nick, is if there is a.
I wouldn't go there, because again, let me explain. The, if, if I'm an adjacent property owner, and my trees are damaged in a certain way, or the sewer line is damaged, right, by the negligence of a construction company, the remedy of just fixing it may be fall far short of what the law would otherwise allow me to recover, because I may have other consequential damages and so forth. So I don't think it's even a, I mean, even if the applicant were to agree to that, that wouldn't prevent a lawsuit from a damaged property owner to recover whatever damages the law allows, which might be broader than just replacing the trees. It might involve more money than merely fixing the sewer line. My advice to you is to stay away from three and four. I suggest that they are improper conditions to impose in a special use permit.
Thanks, Nick. Thanks, Marty. Danny?
I would like to move that we ask staff to prepare a finding of facts for the special use permit accommodating the seven and a half foot sidewalk that compromises the existing verge and that reflects the current moved dumpster, but that otherwise does not reflect the remedies which our town council is telling us are legally questionable, largely because it may compromise the rights of the adjoining property owner, not because we don't want them remedied, just to be very clear. I would, I would otherwise like to move that we prepare the fact.
So I want to note, Danny, that there is an existing motion, and that has been properly seconded on the table. So I want to.
I apologize, I lost it completely.
You're fine. I just, it's easy, it's easy to lose track of. I wonder, Sammy, are you willing to withdraw that motion so we can proceed with Danny's motion, or do you?
I'm willing to alter my motion to take out one, three, and four, and leave as a placeholder two, because it sounds like the applicant will come back with some research on, on the dumpster question. And then also includes, as Marty suggested, that this is all in a reference to the alternative drawings that were shared with us tonight. And have I missed anything else?
And the seven and a half foot sidewalk.
Oh, right, thank you. Seven and a half foot sidewalk.
Verge.
Okay.
Verge, extending the five foot sidewalk into that two and a half feet for a total of seven and a half feet.
Randy, you were the seconder of that motion. Are those amendments okay with you?
With those amendments, yes.
Could we also include in the motion that staff look into this broader question about traffic on Center Street?
I'm going to ask that we keep that separate, just because we're talking about the findings of fact, and I want to stay within that. But hold on to that, Susan, and we'll come back to that. Okay. There's a, a motion by Sammy, seconded by Randy, that we direct staff to draft the findings of fact and a decision by the council in approving this application. That includes a reference to the modified site plan that we've been seeing, shown tonight with the relocated dumpster, et cetera, et cetera. We saw another, a couple other modifications. Seven and a half foot approximate sidewalk that is widened because we're eliminating the so-called verge, I guess, and deals with information related to the time of the dumpsters being serviced.
And can I clarify, do you mean by that, and this would be a permissible condition, that you strict hours, for example, this was proposed at 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m.?
Well, I want to say that rather than specifying those hours, I know that we've placed a condition like this on other similar, similarly situated properties, and I just would ask that staff use precedent as a guide.
Fair enough. Okay, do you understand that, Marty?
Okay.
And we're doing that.
Because we'll be doing this together.
And we're also doing that with the understanding that the applicant's going to be doing some research and coming back to us, so we may alter that, so it's more.
Yeah, we can fill in a blank there. I just want to understand.
In conversation with the applicant, right. Does everyone understand the motion?
Yes.
Does the clerk?
Wait, you said no?
No, I said yes.
Oh, you said yes.
Good. Does staff and the clerk understand the motion?
Yes. Well, I do. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion by council members? All right. And again, the motion was by Sammy, and the second was by Randy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Matter passes unanimously.
May I just note that.
It was the public hearing.
When, when, oh, yeah, closing the public hearing.
I will now close the public hearing.
And presumably, you'd like us to bring that back before summer break?
Yes.
And we'll work with the manager to figure out which day.
Preferably in the next two weeks.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Marty, thank you so much for helping guide us through this process. Nick, as always, your advice is really invaluable. I appreciate the applicant's presentation, all the community members and folks who came to speak on their behalf. It was really helpful to get us to this point, and we'll be making a decision in the next two weeks. Thanks.
Yeah, we did the.
The presentation.
Okay, Mr. Manager. Next slide is. I do, I want to say, council members, I hope that we're going to get through the entire agenda tonight. That is my goal. I very much want us to do everything that we've set out to do tonight. I know it's been a, an interesting evening, but we're on a good roll here, and I'm very optimistic about what we're going to be doing tonight. So, Mr. Manager.
The next slide is the annual Orange County Food Council Presentation in Progress Report. And Ashley Hager, the Orange County Food Council Coordinator, is here to make the presentation.
Good to see you in person.
I'm thinking of the last time I saw you all.
Not a complaining proud, as it turns out.
Apparently not.
I'm shocked they aren't staying for me.
Ashley, it's really nice to see you in person.
To see you all. I know. It's been some time since I've seen you.
Appreciate you being here with us so late. Always look forward to this annual report. And I know you've heard from the manager and the staff about kind of, do try to keep it a little.
Yeah, I'm going to be trying brief as possible.
I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course. Would you like me to wait for the other council members to return, or should I just launch into it? I'm happy to wait.
Might as well wait a couple minutes. Thanks.
I'm assuming that my children are just gonna sleep all the way till like 5:00 or 6:00 a.m., and everything will be fine. I like your thinking, positive thinking. Are you? How many little ones? Two?
Always five.
Always five. If we're lucky, it's five.
It will be five. It's the seven mindset that gets us.
I just keep thinking, why did they come up with the phrase, sleep like a baby?
Because they look so cute when they're asleep.
That's a good point. That's a very good point. I was wondering.
Can't be turned down?
I like it.
I think it's probably just the thermostat.
I'm freezing.
Warm up here. It's probably the AC.
We need the, we need the filter.
I would actually leave that on, if you don't mind, John. Oh, that'll help, actually, yeah. Let's turn it back to where it was, John. We now have the TV lights on, which will warm us up a little bit.
Can you order it me, do I need to use the mouse, or can I use this right here?
Okay.
Either one.
All back now, and Ashley, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you all for your patience and for still having me tonight. So I'm Ashley Hager. I'm the coordinator of the Orange County Food Council. I am the sole, the sole staff person for this body. I am housed in the county manager's office. Sort of launching in to be quick, but I want to provide a little bit of background because there are some new faces here. What I'm going to cover tonight is what is usually my annual report. I'm packing quite a lot in because I haven't seen you all in some time. So I'm going to do like, big picture, just general report, like the highlights of what we've been up to since you all signed an MOU, an interlocal agreement, to establish my position in July 2019. And then I'm going to dig into just two programs or, or sort of priority areas that we're working on right now. So who we are. We are made up of the coordinator, the sole staff person, myself, elected liaisons, council members, and community partners. Our mission is to grow a sustainable and equitable local food system in Orange County, North Carolina. And we work by investing in relationships, working with community experts to identify issues and opportunities. And I want to be clear that we see and sort of really base our whole methodology around community experts being founded in lived experience. That's what we mean when we say community expert. Can you not hear me, councilman? You know, I've got two little unvaccinated littles at home, so I'm, I'm trying to be safe still, but, but I'm happy to, to lean in and be a little bit more clear. Um, part of our work is research and best practices, and then developing relationships and solutions, and building bridges between community wisdom and decision makers. That last part is really the most consequential, I think, of my role as your coordinator and what our work has looked like over the last few years. So again, I'm trying to go really fast, but here are just the highlights of what we've been doing since 2019, when I was hired in the county in July 2019. So we worked with the Gare One Orange team to develop a proposal. It hasn't moved forward yet, but we developed a pretty rigorous proposal for an open data index. This was based on a few different case studies. We also created a food access report, which we are updating now, and I will get into that in a moment. We developed a racial equity scorecard for the county food system, completed an equity assessment of two agricultural programs, supported the development of a black farmer, Orange County Black Farmer Group, that was originally named as our Black Farmer Think Tank. They now are an autonomous body that organizes and coordinates themselves, but we're still in deep relationship with them. We hosted weekly, then turned monthly COVID food system coordination calls. That spanned from March 2020 all the way into the fall of 2020. And then we have facilitated community feedback to emergency food assistance, in particular at the beginning of the pandemic, when everything was really critical, and we needed to hear from those most impacted. Our projects right now is a community food access assessment. I'll dig into those details in a moment. A pilot program, we are calling the Growing Local Food Markets. And then we have just hosted a community rooted development training with a partner, Communities in Partnership, which is based in Durham, but they work with a variety of really amazing academics and community experts across this whole region. And then we also participate in the Farm Worker Advocacy Network, which we find really impactful for our work here in Orange County, but the broader food shed as well. Okay, so how we work. Try to put this in the quickest and simplest terms. One of the biggest lessons we have learned in the last few years is, it's not just what you do, but it is in fact how you do it. The how, the practices themselves will lead towards the impacts, right? And then we've moved away from just hosting or attending trainings around equity or naming it as a value, and really trying to operationalize it, right? Like, how do you act on equity? So here's a few, I guess, four sort of highlights around our framework here. Moving at the speed of trust and relationships, asking who makes decisions for whom and how, shifting power and resources to those most impacted. I think that is one of the most significant things that you will see as a, a sort of theme throughout the rest of my presentation. And then, again, valuing, valuing and seeing lived experience as subject matter expertise. I always bring this back to you all. I'm sure you might be sick of seeing it at this point, but it is a good reminder for me around a term I often hear, which is political realities, and that political realities do change, and culture shifts to allow those political realities to change. So at a point in time, equality was really like the highest bar that we could meet in society, and I think we've made a shift into equity. And the Food Council, along with our partners, is exploring what it would look like to truly not just try to change, but move away from the systems that have created the issues. This is another key part of our framework, how we work. This is Arnstein's ladder. It's something that has really been impactful for me as well. I can read that out loud to you all, or I can just say that, like, the key part here is really seeing the differences between nonparticipation, tokenism, and then actual shifts in power, right? So it goes back to that question of who gets to make decisions for whom and how. I did share with my liaison earlier today that, like, we don't always get to make our own decisions, right? I don't get to blow through a, a school zone going 50 miles an hour because I feel like it. So there is some, there are some guardrails in place in society that are important, but it's fundamentally an important question to ask, because it's sort of moving to the root cause of the issue, right? Who has been disenfranchised, and what has that looked like, and how do we make those power shifts to actually impact and come to the solutions that we really want to see? Okay, so that's just a preview of what we've been up to and sort of the shift in our methodology and framework. Right now, we are at the tail end of a community food access assessment. We were asked by the county commissioners almost a year ago to redo our sort of assessment of food access in the county. We went to community leaders, and we said, how's this sound to you, right? Things have changed significantly since COVID. We were recognizing the precarity of the, the circumstances in our society. And their first response, and overwhelming response to me, was, the only data you need is that people needed food assistance. That tells you everything, and we are very tired of the data mining. So why do you need to come back and survey us and ask for more? And instead, they guided me to try and audit the county. So that's what we've done. That is the, the how and the what. So we developed a design team that has been led by compensated community experts with lived experience in food insecurity that have guided the entire process. And that process has really been a focus on an audit of the county budget. So we have looked at every area that we believe impacts food access over the last five fiscal years in the county, to be able to compile the data around where investments have been made. We have now packaged that all up in a really fun workbook for community experts who are about to go through three consulting sessions with us. Again, each community expert is compensated with a consulting fee that is sort of at the same rate that we would compensate other consultants in the county and towns. And they'll be analyzing that data and providing their feedback, right, through their own experiences. So they'll be doing this community-led analysis around the budget data. They'll also be facilitating or helping us facilitate a gaps analysis around food insecurity. And then ultimately, the idea is to develop a final report with recommendations for all of the electeds and decision makers in the county, right? So not just, here is the problem, we've outlined the problem, but actually modeling what it can look like to shift that power, and then to have those community expert recommendations in front of you in clear language and terms. When I say food access, this is what we actually mean. So we did not only look at programs directly related to food programs. We took a more holistic view of what food insecurity looks like. This is based on, now it's 10:30 at night, and my mind just went blank. This is based on the social determinants of health. So this is sort of our social determinants of food insecurity. We've got food programs, which really just means like charitable food assistance, but this also includes institutional food assistance, like FNS and EBT, local ag production and food businesses, housing, very important, economic development, and transportation. So all of those areas were identified in the budget when we did that audit. And I'm using audits a little informally. We did not have a professional audit company come in. This was just our design team, our research team doing this. Here is just a quick preview of one of the pieces in our workbook for community experts. We're actually showing them exactly where ARPA funding, American Rescue Plan Act funding has gone. And we're going to ask them for their feedback. So that blue part of the pie chart is housing. The yellow is multiple. That means wraparound services, so similar to IFC, who you saw earlier tonight, right, who does more than just one type of service, but really wraps their clients around and like the supports and services they need. And then the, the green is food. So this is just a capture of, again, this criteria for the ARPA funding that the county has invested. We have not looked at the town budgets just because of capacity and limitations there. Okay, so that's all I have to share at this moment about the food access assessment. I want to just be clear that we are about to finish that process, and then we will be providing a report to all the elected bodies when you return from summer break. and then we will be providing a report to all the elected bodies when you return from summer break. So Expanding Local Food Markets Pilot Project. This also came to us through the chair of the county commissioners. They wanted to see more data collected around local agriculture and food production, but also a sense of like how we can expand markets in this county. So the last six months, I have been working with Cooperative Extension and we conducted some stakeholder interviews, including some of the members of the Black Farmer Group that we worked with and other high impacted areas of our cultural community. We have now proposed an 18-month pilot program that will be funded by the county. No funding is being requested by the towns. And the idea is that we're going to set up an online platform with a company that already has a great reputation of doing this, FreshBuyer. And we're going to have six to eight growers get technical assistance to be on an online marketing program. So that somewhere like Weaver Street or a local restaurant or even like US Foods in Cisco can say, I'm looking for, you know, two pallets of zucchini, who's got it at this price and rate? What we want to do is start shifting those farmers into a space where they can make those connections more easily and it's not so heavily reliant on individual relationships. We see that as like an equity outcome, but also just kind of taking the lessons from the pandemic into the future, right? Before the pandemic, I worked with the same group of staff in the county and we had very few growers and farmers in this county interested in institutional procurement. So like moving into the school system or UNC or bigger buyers, right? Or even Weaver Street. That has drastically shifted now. We are seeing an overwhelming amount of farmers being prepared to do that and also interested in growing into that space. The other benefit of this, I think specifically for you all in Carrow, is that we're going to be collecting a lot of data along the way to understand what our agricultural side of the community looks like and what impact that has on local businesses as well. All right, the final and sometimes more difficult thing to talk about, which is the establishment of my position. We had an MOU that was signed in 2019 by all of the elected bodies to create a full-time coordinator position for the Food Council. You all provide a portion of our budget, which is modeled after the partnership in homelessness, that same process. And that MOU is coming up for a renewal. It will come before you sometime, I believe in the fall. I am working on a redline version of the MOU that will be updated. But I just want to share briefly the recommendations of the Executive Committee of the Food Council, which is all four elected liaisons and our two co-chairs. The updated recommendations to this MOU are remain in effect for five years instead of two years. That was the original plan until some shifts happened in 2018, 2019. Update the funding percentages, of course, with the newest census data. Remove the number of council seats from the MOU and only have that in the Food Council's bylaws. And then include a specific reference to our racial equity work because it really sort of is the foundation from where we work with right now. Okay, that's about as fast as I can talk. I'm so very happy to take questions if I mumbled my way through that.
You did really well. Thank you so much, Ashley. It's always good to get these updates. It's fascinating to hear what y'all have been working on. And I want to acknowledge that Sammy is the liaison from this council to the Food Council and appreciate all the work y'all have been doing together with our partners around the county. Are there questions from council members for Ashley? Danny?
I'll just very quickly offer some appreciation for your model of citizen participation and empowerment. I really think that you've crystallized some ideas that other partners would do well to heed about efforts that we need to take to make sure that these decisions are really made by the people who need to be making them. And I don't have very much to say. I just am very grateful for the thought and effort that y'all have obviously put into that.
You so much. We have been guided by a lot of great mentors in the community. So we're very lucky and privileged to have that relationship.
Elias R. and then Susan.
Hi, yeah, great work. Thank you for doing all of that. Just one quick question, just for my clarification and the recommendations. I know that that's not before us just yet and that's going to be coming down. Was there a particular reason why you're removing or would want to move the council from the MOU and just put on the bylaws? Is it just to like make it easier or is there something there?
I think the electeds on the executive committee and my liaison council, sorry, I'm so used to saying commissioner, councilperson Slade can probably answer that better. That was a recommendation from the other electeds. I think because it mirrors the way that other boards function in the county and because things can change. For example, we had gone up to 16 members on the Food Council. We're recognizing that that might be a bit bloated and we're now moving internally to trim it back down to 11, to have a balance of power dynamics, to make sure that we're having correct representation. And so I believe the feeling was because the MOU is this legal document mostly focused on funding and structure of oversight, that we should remove that.
No, that makes sense. I was just curious on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elias R. Susan?
Hi, Ashley. Thank you for your presentation this evening. Just one question for you. There was the slide with the ARPA funding. And it's kind of striking in that housing alone takes up such a big chunk and the multiple is just 4%, the wraparound services.
It's actually only 2.9%. I'm so sorry. I'm getting better at my graphics, but I'm missing that number there.
That's okay. Regardless, it's just a really small amount. And I'm curious, you know, to what extent are you exploring ways that there can be more wraparound services? And so just as one example, as people walk into Community Empowerment Fund to get rental assistance, can they be also given an application for how they could get food assistance from one of the local nonprofits? But I'm curious if to what extent you're having these discussions on how to make that graph not appear quite so blue? Even though I'm happy to see the money going toward funding, can there be a lot more yellow on there?
Well, sorry.
Yes, that was, yes.
We're not making those recommendations. We're waiting to see what the community experts tell us about their experiences, right? And to sort of just sit back and allow the experts to talk about and discuss their experiences, potential solutions they see, and then to develop that into a set of recommendations. So, you know, anecdotally, if I had conversations about exactly that, like how do we increase the amount of wraparound services? How do we really support groups like Community Empowerment Fund and IFC that do that critical work? Like the economic side of food insecurity, right? Not just the direct services. Yes, we've had those conversations and how important they are, much like housing, right? Like, what's the phrase, rent eats first? Or like the amount you're spending on housing is always going to eat first, right? So, but I don't have like the actual findings because we're about to go through that process. So that begins in about two weeks. Eight different community experts that represent the full breadth of this community as far as those most impacted by food insecurity. So this is our black community, our Latinx community, our refugee and immigrant community, and as well as our Northern Orange, more rural based communities will be represented in those eight members. They'll be guided by our sort of lead community experts that have been involved since the beginning. And they'll be analyzing this data and then saying whether or not they believe wraparound services should take up more of that pie chart. But I don't have a direct answer for you only because we're really trying to model what that shift looks like and how we make decisions and who gets seen as the expert. I think I have my own opinions as your coordinator, but I will hold off on sharing those for now.
Good. Well, I'm glad those conversations are happening, so.
Very important.
Thank you. Thank you for all your good work, Ashley.
Thank you.
Ashley, could you just speak a little bit to the ARA funding that we thought we might be able to access, but unfortunately somehow it wasn't prioritized by the county?
So I was directed to apply for ARPA funding, American Rescue Plan Act funding. I went through a series of revisions with county leadership and finance, but was just told a few weeks ago that we will not be receiving any ARPA funding for the Food Council. And I'll tell you just the sort of highlights of our proposal. We were requesting a total of $218,000. $18,000 to be spent to expand this assessment and then to conduct a community input process where we would actually be providing essentially payments to community experts to not just have free work, right? To not say, hey, show up to this thing and assume it's a participatory democracy, but to really target those most impacted and to say, we value your expertise. We want you here, so we're actually going to compensate you and allow this to be accessible. That was the $18,000 in our proposal. The $200,000 was to be held to be used as defined by those community experts. So we intended for this to be at least a six-month input process, to be pretty large, not just eight people, but really like as many people as possible. And for them to develop their recommendations and priorities for the $200,000 that would be used for direct services. So whether that's something like increasing funding for wraparound services or increasing gift card programs like our DSS department does have, or if it was something like the development of a food justice fund, which we've seen a number of food councils do across the nation. But what we didn't want to do was just say, you know, Ashley knows best and this is how we're going to invest it in the food system. We were going to, again, like model that sort of shift in power. But that proposal was not received or it's not moving forward.
So thanks for sharing that. And I just wanted her to mention that here because as we have a relationship with some commissioners, it may be an opportunity to, you know, ask them like why that fell off the plate. Or even for us to consider, as we're considering how to use our ARA funding in terms of perhaps allocating a proportionate amount ourselves and then have some leverage with the county commissioners and even the town of Chapel Hill, which also has ARA funding to get to that number that you were making this proposal for. So as part of our ARA process, and I don't really know exactly where the county is, but I do know they have a lot more money still. Maybe that is part of this conversation that we're right now having in terms of how to allocate those funds. So Ashley, perhaps you could share that study or proposal you had so that we can incorporate that as we, as part of our process in deciding ARA and can have that conversation with our colleagues on the other councils.
Absolutely. And something I've offered to the county commissioners, and then I'm not going to take up much more of your time, is that there are a number of food policy councils, but just groups generally across the state and across the nation that are helping facilitate these more community-driven input processes around this funding. I would be happy to write up a one pager on those practices and just like, not really a case study, but like here's some highlights on how people are doing it in other communities, if that's useful.
And just to underscore, it's the process that I feel like the Food Council is really kind of like experimenting with and serving as a model for all these other departments and staff people and electeds who are trying to figure out how to make this all be informed by direct experience and those who are most impacted. So thanks for your presentation and all your work.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again, Ashley. Sammy, would you like to move that we accept the presentation and the progress report?
Yes, happily. Thank you.
For a second? Seconded by Elias R. that we accept the presentation and Ashley's report with much appreciation, as usual. Looking forward to seeing more of you in the coming year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes unanimously.
Thank you all so much. I hope to see you soon.
Ashley.
Mr. Manager?
The last item for tonight is the adoption of the Carrow Connects 2022 to 2042 Comprehensive Plan. The purpose of the agenda item is for the town council to consider adoption of the draft comprehensive plan, Carrow Connects 2022 to 2042. And Trish McGuire, our planning director, has some introductory comments.
I'm becoming tech support tonight.
Tech support.
Welcome, Trish.
Good evening. Thanks for hanging in there.
Thank you.
Let's see. Okay. So I'm just going to run through, hopefully briefly, what we have done with the documents since the May 10th meeting. And so if I can just run through a few slides, that'd be all right with y'all? Okay. So first thing I just wanted to mention is that we have reviewed the comments from May 10th and incorporated them into the document. So there is an updated version of that document, which you've received a link to. We've seen it on the web, got a printed copy, whichever is your preference. So I do want to mention that this comprehensive plan will be a guiding document, a guiding framework for the town moving forward into the future. It doesn't, it looks a little bit like the be all, end all, but it isn't. It's also not exactly a shopping list or a laundry list, but it is more of that than some comprehensive plans in that it does have this first five-year framework for implementation. So it differs a little bit from some comprehensive plans that you might encounter. But in any case, we have provided in your packets this evening the link to the document, the agenda abstract with a summary of some of those changes and then as well the resolution for you to consider it for adoption. So you had some great discussion back on May 10th and we did listen to those comments and review what you said and have worked to incorporate those into the document. Some of them, you'll remember, were more minor types of changes. We received some comments from the public as well as you all. And then the staff and the consultants also did another read through and we did identify some typographic errors, some grammatical changes. We've incorporated those in. They have not been listed out in the materials we provided to you. But the big things I wanted to focus on are the things that really are the changes that resulted from your conversation and your input to us. So there are three basic areas that we want to look at. Oh, we want to do it. We also want to acknowledge everybody for their work so far. So, thanks. I thought this was in, oh, I'm at the back of my, oh, we're done. That was good, wasn't it? Sorry about that. So anyway, those are the three bits that we have included in your packet for the evening. And first thing I want to just mention is that the first topic that we incorporated into the document from your comments on May 10th, we're adding language to really more clearly emphasize the advancing racial equity commitment of this whole process and this document, this plan itself. And so we've worked to try and strengthen the language that acknowledges our commitment to Gare, our work with the adoption of One Orange, the framework and the use of the lens as we move forward with plan implementation. So I hope you've had a chance to take a look at that. And there is specific language that we've noted up on the screen here that relates to how we've made those changes in the document. The next part is the question of land use. And so there was a conversation about the map itself, the land use map and the term residential in particular. And so what we have changed, the definition of residential, to make it very clear that, and this is really consistent with the way we do residential development and have done residential development for decades in Carrow in that in nearly all of our zoning districts, all residential types are allowed. So there was not really an intention to make it so that they weren't going to be allowed going forward and we didn't want to convey that. So thanks for calling out that question and working to make this more clear and consistent in that way. So the definition's been changed. And we have also added a couple of projects in relation to the conversation about trying to slow the increase of housing prices and diversifying the housing stock. And so we've got two projects that are looking at incentivizing strategies that might help with higher yields for smaller residential units being incorporated in to redevelopment situations or, you know, additional development rather than just displacement of existing lots, for example. As well as the preservation of existing homes with the addition of accessory dwelling units. And we'll look at, you know, density allowances, smaller setbacks, et cetera. These weave into some other items as well. In that, so we are looking at, you know, we've added this additional project, which is looking at changes to the land use ordinance that would allow residential density to be increased in locations. And in particular, we noted up to four units, kind of consistent with that conversation. But it would be dependent on site characteristics. So we're not, this isn't the ordinance, you know, this is just a framework and policy framework. So, but some of those changes are looking at what are the types of performance standards we could incorporate so that we could make it really probably not as a special use more, maybe by right if the performance standards are spelled out so that we can have, you know, a trade off of some additional public types of benefits in relation to the density changes. And affordable housing is one of them. Green infrastructure is another one. There are a couple of other things that we've noted. Okay, the other conversation really was about transportation and mobility. And so we have included a project to remove minimum vehicular parking requirements for residential development close to transit. So that was sort of in, we had the conversation about this relates to residential uses, but this specifically was included. And this would be, you know, in addition to lower residential, parking rather, for other residential units and accessory dwelling units. So we've got some language about considering maximums. We added a definition of what close to transit means, which will be based on the level of service of the transit within a, I think we've got a half mile. level of service of the transit within a, within a, I think we've got a half mile from the, from the areas where we would, we would look at these parking reductions so that there's a linkage, you know, a tie-in to access to transit. And we have proposed the average 30-minute intervals on weekdays and 60-minute intervals for transit service on the weekends as a part of that definition. Those are the three big changes. The deadline we're working to is July 1st, 2022. We, our next step will be to produce a detailed executive summary to post and distribute the document, add our new council member's name to the acknowledgements page. And then really, just, this is just the first step, you know, because we, we will be moving into implementation as soon as this is done. So happy to try and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Trish. It's a pretty, I mean, you've said this, you've said this on multiple occasions by now already, but how amazing it is that we, we are now here. And now we really are here. So thank you again for all the work that you and your staff have done. Eli Azar.
Yes, so thank you. I made it in time to move that we approve this. But no, as, as a person who, or as someone who's been in this process since the beginning, you know, thank you for all the work that all the staff and the leadership that took to get this done. I appreciate the Spanish part. And I just want to acknowledge the importance of, of, of the work that was done and, and really celebrate the long months and all the community engagement and the feedback, or how well staff receive feedback and how willing folks were, were, were to work with communities and community groups. So I, I love being a part of it. I am proud to, to move that we approve. I don't know if it's, I'm supposed to do it now or later, but I'm just going to go ahead and do it.
Okay, Eli Azar has moved that we adopt Carboro Connects. Randy, is there a second?
I'll second.
Susan has seconded. Is that all right? Okay.
Do you have a comment?
Randy, and then, do you have questions?
I had a really quick comment.
We'll go Randy, then Susan, then Danny.
Yeah. Thank you, Trish. I agree with everything that Eli Azar has said. You, you and your team and Scott and Tesca and their team have done a magnificent job. I mean, this is, this has really been quite an undertaking and, you know, with all the twists and turns and through a pandemic and through meeting virtually, you've accomplished something that is amazing. I just want to direct to, to tweaks that I would like in order to, you know, to recognize the, the interest of the water community and that the, the tweaks are consistent to build stronger consistency with the 2020 bike plan. On the transportation mobility, page 66, letter O, and I would just ask that letter O that says Carolina North Forest Continue Initiatives to Improve Access and Travel, in parentheses, not Carboro property, I would ask to take out the word travel since the word travel gets ahead of the yet-to-be-determined community engagement that we, we're working And, and that way it's not making the assumption of the outcome. And I would just like to see the language reflect that, you know, we're continuing the initiatives and improving access at this time. That's number one, because I feel like adding the word travel is, is a determinant, it's presupposing the outcome. The second is on page, page 121. And on page 121, in the, in the green rectangle, first of all, Bowlin Creek Greenway, Carboro adopted the Greenway Master Plan in 2006, not 2009. Okay, so that needs to be, that edit. I think I know how that happened because there was conversation about the Bowlin Creek Water Restoration, which that one was 2009. But the last sentence, I would like that last sentence, "As consideration of other alignments in that plan were not discussed as part of the planning process because as of April 22nd, direction has yet to be determined by the Carboro Town Council." I would just add to that because I know public is highly aware, I would say that because of, as of April 2022, I can't read, that directions, direction has not yet been determined by the council for staff to proceed with the process. So in other, in other words, so that it's clear that, that staff is involved in the identification and the, the engagement process with the community, the public engagement process. And that's what folks are expecting.
Thanks.
121.
Thanks, Randy.
May I just ask two questions when, when there's a chance for me to?
Go ahead, Trish.
I was wondering if we could just, we could change it to, well, we can just change it to access. I mean, the reason it's in there the way it is under, on O is that, you know, it's kind of an interesting situation at Carolina North. The, all of the running trails there are mapped in our road network in GIS, and they're done that so we can uniformly have that data in the road network so 911 can access that space when they, if there's an emergency call, so.
And they're used for travel.
Well, they are used for travel and certainly kind of mobility, but, and I, that's why the, that's why it's in there. It actually isn't anything to do with the Greenways. It's actually because the property is used.
It's more Wrexham Park, actually.
Well, I mean, people, people travel through there to go to the schools. Even, it hasn't, it really doesn't, I mean, honestly, the comment didn't have to do anything with phases three and four. It had to do with the way the property is used. So that's why the note was put on the map. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
But, and then really just, I wanted everybody to kind of realize that, you know, that so many people go there, that the, those spaces are mapped so that they can be, people can be, you know, found if something happens.
But we don't want to mislead public who, who knows that this is something that's yet to be discussed.
Sure.
If you use the word travel, it is presupposing an outcome. And I just want to be careful and be sensitive because I want, I want everyone to feel that this is their plan.
And then I, if I could just, then about the one on 121.
Yeah.
The instructions we got previously were that for that note to match exactly what was in the bike plan. And we made only one change to that language, and that is that the bike plan, of course, was adopted earlier. And so it says as of, I think, October 2020 or something like that. And so we changed it to be reflect now, when this plan is adopted. But otherwise, the language that's included there is to match what we, what you all approved in the, so I just want to make sure everybody.
Right.
Recognizes that so that then it won't match if you change it. So that's all.
But, but what it will match is what the public understands came out of the December 8th, 2009 Board of Aldermen, that the staff is directed to identify a, a public process. And I'm only trying to make sure that folks who are awaiting a public process understand that staff will be directed by the council to provide a public process or provide options for a public process. That also came out of our subcommittee meeting, the mayor's subcommittee meeting with Lydia Lovell, saying the same language.
Thanks, Randy. Let me suggest kind of a way to approach this. As Randy suggested, three things, and it seems to me that one of them is a, Randy's suggesting is a, is a, is an error, which is if you look at the, that box.
It is, yes. It should be 2006.
Should be 2006, not 2009.
Yes, my apologies.
Given where we are in this process.
I remember the conversation about this.
Other than identifying actual clear errors, I, you know, I just want to try to.
Yes.
steer us away from having additional substantive discussion about something that we've, we've really talked through quite a bit. Barbara, actually I had, I'm sorry, Susan was next, then Danny, and then Barbara, did you have your hand?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
So we have next is Susan, and then Danny.
My comments are very quick. First, I want to ditto everything that Eli Azar and Randy said about this whole planning process, and thank you, Scott. I'm sorry he's not here this evening, but thanks, Scott, as well.
He's watching.
For, for leading us through this, and it was really a Herculean effort, and thank you for persevering, including through a pandemic, and it's, it's much appreciated. I also wanted to just quickly say that it, it is nice that this is timed with our, our budget this evening because I think, Mr. Manager, I applaud you for the ways that the comprehensive plan, the priorities in that plan are really reflected in our budget, including the hiring of a race and equity manager and officer so that as we go to implement this plan, we'd be looking at it within some extra pairs of eyes in terms of the racial equity lens. But all this is to say thank you and looking forward to putting some of this into action.
Thank you, Susan. Danny?
Trish, I just wanted to offer some quick and sincere thanks for the amendments you made after our last discussion, which I know was a bit of a pain in everybody's rear. I really feel strongly that this plan establishes a very high floor for our possible development as a town, but also, as we have carved out better versions of it, has raised the ceiling significantly for where we might go. And, you know, I just, I just want to very quickly say we've heard a lot about implementation and accountability from different people, and I think that it is the purview of this document to not nail down individual metrics and things that will take further discussion. But I know, I just really strongly feel that this document shows us how to get to the most aggressive, for what I hope to get us to, you know, radical possibilities for reimagining the way that our town works. And I really, really want to thank our staff, all of our departments, and especially you and PZI for years of hard work and collaboration. I'm very pleased that, you know, the travel language reflects the half dozen neighbors I have who walk these trails to school. And, and I'm, I'm very happy to see that the 121 language mirrors the bike plan as we had previously directed. And so I really think that you've done a wonderful job of incorporating what we've told you, meeting our, meeting our citizens where they're at. I just really take my hat off to the staff, and I'm really eager and proud to get this passed, I think.
Welcome. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Trish. Thanks, Danny. So there's a motion and a second on the table. There's been a couple of recommendations about some tweaks, one of which is in fact a, an error that needs to be corrected, I think.
Yes.
Is there at least some openness by Eli Azar and Susan to accept that amendment? That, that particular typo?
Error?
The one about 2009 needs to be 2006.
Yes.
To reference the correct, the correct plan. And thank you. And I will just say, Randy, to your, to your points about, you know, making sure that members of the public understand the role that public input will have in any future decisions about, in particular, Carolina North or the Bowlin Creek Greenway Conceptual Master Plan, absolutely, that's built into the direction that the council gave to staff all the way back in 2009 when most of us were not up here, and is reaffirmed in later decisions by this council. So I don't think anybody has an interest in stepping away from that, nor would that be wise. So we have a motion and a second. It's been amended, and the amendment's been accepted by the mover and the seconder. Is there any further discussion?
Not that, this late in the process, there's an opportunity to change this, but there's an exciting proposal being considered in Raleigh in terms of small-scale commercial in residential neighborhoods tied to ADUs. And in the spirit of this being a live, living document, I look forward to seeing how their process happens and the potential of considering such a thing for Carboro. So I just want to put that on, I sent an email previously, just to remind y'all, and just put that on our radars for future consideration.
Yeah, thanks, Sammy. Actually, you know, when I think Jonathan Melton on the town, on the city council in Raleigh was describing some of the work they'd been doing in Raleigh, and it's pretty exciting, some of the ideas they've come up with, so thanks for highlighting that.
And, and thank you, Trish, and, and the consultants for all the work. Appreciate it.
Well, we had a good group of, you know, community members join in this whole thing. You know, you're, you're urging invitations and I'm sure prompts and whatever else.
Thank you for putting up with me throughout that time.
It really is something for the staff.
It was really tough.
Really is something for staff to be proud of, and I just appreciate all the work that you all have done.
A magnificent lift, it really was.
With such positivity too, all the way through. And worth noting that Eli Azar actually served on the task force, the steering committee for the plan, so we have that overlap now happening here with the council. So there's a motion and a second, as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes unanimously.
Right.
Congratulations.
I was going to clap.
Thank you very much.
There's a motion to adjourn by Randy. Is there a second?
A second. A matter by the board, two.
There's a matter by the board?
What? There's matters by the board on the agenda?
I'm withdrawing the motion.
Yes.
Motion is withdrawn by the mover. Barbara?
Yeah, just really quickly, Mayor. So at the end of the meeting on May 24th, Mayor, you were not here. I feel like I need to provide some clarification for the record about what I said about the possible renaming of the 203 project building for our first and only black mayor, the late Bob Drakeford. So I felt like I needed some clarification there. And the second thing is, I wanted to know where we were as far as discussing this logo, the Feel Free logo. And I guess that's a question for Mr. White.
So what I need, I guess, is for council to give the staff direction to bring that back. We plan to look at our logo. We have so many logos and variations on it, but we heard the comment about Feel Free. And if council will direct us, we'll be happy to take a look at that and develop some process to bring that back for council consideration as well.
Thank you, Mr. White. Can we get that direction tonight?
Richard, just to, you mentioned when that first came up a few weeks ago when Barbara raised that, that the, the staff was already planning to bring to the council sort of some, some related work around branding and the town's kind of marketing and all that.
Yes.
And we had, so we had kind of assumed that that would be wrapped up in that conversation. Is that still the idea?
Yes, to do both of those.
Do you have a sense of when that's coming to the council? In the fall sometime?
It'd be, yeah, be in the fall when you get back at summer break, yes.
So Barbara, may I take that as a motion to be sure that staff includes in that conversation or this discussion about the, the tagline, Feel Free. Is there a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Danny. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Thanks for clarifying that, Barbara. All right, Randy offered a motion to adjourn, and it was seconded originally by Susan. Is that still true?
It still holds.
Right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes unanimously. We are adjourned.